Arts because I'm so fat out and I just can't take it anymore. How do I go up?
So, kicking.
Thank you.
All right, hold on. Uh, not.
Next week.
It's next week, next Thursday, uh, next Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah. So you can't go to Ocean Shore until Friday. Mary. Next, oh, no.
Is that next Wednesday and Thursday?
Thursday, yeah.
Let me see, okay. The budget sessions are next Wednesday, Thursday, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly. That, that.
So you asked me and him, her, then you had to confirm with him?
I want to make sure, I'm about to say it on the TV. I want to confirm with everybody.
Yes, and trust me.
Trust all.
Trust.
No, it says my name. I don't believe it's.
I think you should say that louder.
I know, exactly.
And then on this, or.
So she is right here, right by Robin Orson.
Everybody ready? You guys ready? Welcome, thank you very much for your patience, we've got all kinds of things going on, we've got a packed house, it's great to see everybody. Welcome to the September 20th, 2016 Federway City Council meeting, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Again, it's great to see everybody here, it's good, good to have a turnout, we've got a full agenda, so we'll, we'll go ahead and get, get started. Under Presentations, 3A, we have the proposed King County 2017 and 18 solid waste disposal fee, we've got Meg Morehead from King County Strategy Communications and Performance Manager. Meg, welcome.
Good evening, good to be here, let me see if I can get this. Okay, great. We're here to just give you a heads up about a rate increase that's being proposed for the period of 2017 and 2018. Just to fill you in on where we're at in terms of the decision-making process, we're at a point where the council is deliberating on the proposal, it's in committee right now, they could decide to pass it out of full council on Monday, or if that doesn't happen, it may take another two or three months before they get back to it after their budget deliberation. So, it is expected to occur the, this year however. And just to remind you, King County is, is largely a wholesale service provider, we run eight transfer stations, we have the Cedar Hills Regional Landfill up near Maple Valley, we provide recycling programs and other services, so when a customer, so, to go by the, by the numbers, this is the first rate increase in four years, the current fee is $1.20/17 per ton, and that's been the basic fee since 2013, we're proposing to bring it up to $1.37/75. But the way most customers would see that is as a component of their curbside bill. So, each curbside customer has a bill, most of that actually usually goes to the collection contractor and the cities, and then about a third typically will go to, for the, to the county for their transfer and disposal services. So the typical customer would see about a .94 increase in their monthly bill, that's about 5% compared to the current rate. They'd also see an increase in the self-haul minimum fee at transfer stations of $2.86. We deferred a planned rate increase for 2015 and 16, and as a result, we did not collect $22 million that we would have had we done the rate increase earlier. So what, what are the components? Really, there's not much new here, most of the fee will continue to go towards our basic services, our transfer stations, landfill, recycling services, and the costs for those have increased over the last four years, inflation, issuing debt to rebuild some of the transfer stations, so you'll see the orange wedge there is the portion of the increase that's just going to pay the increased cost of what we're already doing today. We're also proposing to, to increase the reliability of some of our services, that's the little gray wedge right there, things like adding a new tipping machine up at the landfill, so if, when one of the two existing machines goes down, we don't have a backup at the landfill. And then we have one small segment for testing, how we might use different approaches to incentivizing users to use non-peak hours at existing stations to help avoid new capital investments. So there are the components of the rate increase, mostly inflation, the, the far-left bar, then selling bonds for rebuilding the transfer stations, then a component for replacing aging equipment, and then a couple of reserve funds for keeping up our active landfill, and also caretaking the seven closed landfills, and then the two components for new investment. So, that is all I have to do, say, I'd be happy to take any questions.
And we have our resident solid waste expert, Councilmember DuKlo, Councilmember, any questions or comments?
No, I don't have any, and I, and I think I relinquished that title about a year ago.
All right. Once you've got it, you keep it, all right, I'm just kidding. Council, any other questions about that? Thank you, Meg, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Now we're going to emerging, Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report, first we have a report on our Performing Arts and Events Center Public Art finalist, Teresa Yvonne, our PAC Director, Teresa?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, it's my pleasure to update you on our 2% for the art program, we have a project that will be placed in sight, onsite at the Performing Arts and Events Center. I'm going to go over the timeline, where we're at right now, and of course, thank my committee members. We sent out requests for qualifications in March of 2016, we had a call to artist submission deadline of May 6th, we had 178 artists that put in their qualifications, we narrowed that down to 19 finalists selected, and narrowed that down from the 19 to a final four. The finalists did a site visit in June, and their site-specific proposal was due September 9th. So my public art advisory committee consists of three arts commissioners, Vicky Chenoweth, Tina Kalanen, Gary Gillespie, I have two youth commissioners, one Jessie Goldstone, and at the bottom, Alyssa Odom, Youth Commissioner Alternate, she is off in Hawaii now going to college, so she helped serve at the beginning of the program, and now we have Jess, who's been very helpful, Joanne Paquette, representing the Federway Coalition for the Performing Arts, as well as Betty Huff, Bob Kellogg, a community member, and Bob Franklin as an artist. These folks, we have the four finalists, as I mentioned, and if you want, their maquettes and their proposals are in the other room in Hilaos, if you want to take a look on your way out. This is artist David Dalquist and Matt Nibier, Hilaos Harmonics. These columns represent, they went to the Hilaos, and these columns represent bird songs in a linear colored fashion, so that's why the harmonics. This is artist Cliff Garten, he's from Southern California, this is Hilaos, working title. The bronze basket that you see at the top that the water is pouring out, out of represents the Native American baskets that they use in the water. This is conductor's hands, this is from Barbara Gudis, Greg Gudis, sorry, she is from New Mexico, and this is out of aluminum and lighted in the interior. And this is artist Roger Stoller, he is also from California, and this is muse, his muse was Mount Rainier, and then the, the reflecting pool that you see there is the headwaters of the Hilaos. So those are our four finalists. My committee actually met this Monday, we have some clarification questions back to the artists, so I've sent them emails, we will meet again this coming Monday, and once a finalist is chosen, it will go to the Arts Commission meeting in October, and then on to the Parks Recreation Human Services Public Safety meeting, and then the finalists will come to City Council, and with the anticipated project being complete in the spring of 2017. And with that, if you have any questions?
Council, do you have any questions?
I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you, I apologize, I was in the middle of a sneeze when you mentioned the, when you showed the first one, could you go back to that one again?
The first one?
And, yeah, and just give me the background on it one more time, I, I apologize for that.
This is Hilaos Harmonics, so basically, it's the artist interpretation of our Hilaos, and the columns, the colors on the columns represent the harmonic sounds of our bird songs here.
Okay.
And the Hilaos.
And what is it made out of?
The, the columns are, those are actually Italian tiles that would create the colors, and it's actually, if you look at their proposal in the room, it, they show it linear, and then it basically wraps around the columns, so that it shows, you know, when you watch, I don't know if you guys watch television, where they take the voices and they, you know, I hear a train in the background, it's basically the harmonics and modulation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Council, any other questions? Very exciting, thank you very much, Teresa.
Sure.
Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, um, you know, on the screen right here is, represents the next agenda item, which was the Mayor's Day of Concern food drive recap, we've got Jeffrey Watson, our Human Services Manager, who's going to come up and talk about that effort, but this was at the Fred Meyer on Saturday, we had six different locations in Federway, many, many volunteers, and, that was, that was outside Fred Meyer, when Mr. Watson gets done with his presentation, we'll show the picture again, Mr. Watson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council, as the mayor has noted, this past Saturday, September 17th, was the annual Mayor's Day of Concern for the hungry, there was a food drive that took place at a number of, excuse me, grocery stores around the city, and was supported by approximately 40 volunteers. This year was a very successful food drive, collected a little over 7,700 pounds of, of food, approximately a 75% increase from last year. The, the slide shows how things have gone over the last three years, as well as noting that in the last 12 years, we have collected over 150,000 pounds of food for those in need in, in the city. In addition to the, to the food collected, cash donations have also always been a part of, of the food drive, this year, we collected a little over $700, which is an increase from, from last year, and the mayor has let me know that Waste Management has confirmed to him that they are adding another $500 in the donation, so that'll bring it up to $1,200. Again, over the last, the last 12 years, there's been a little less than $9,000 collected in addition to the 150,000 pounds of food, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Honda?
Thank you, first of all, I'd like to thank all the volunteers who were out collecting food that day at the grocery stores, and the multi-service center for being open on a Saturday to, to receive the collections, but can you go back to your first slide where it had the amount of food collected by Waste Management? So, they picked up 4,400 pounds?
That's correct.
Which is quite an increase from 335 from the year before?
Yes, it is, as I recall, last year, there were some, I think there were communication problems that, that led to a decrease last year between the, the route runners and, and the homeowners and, and management at Waste Management, and, and so this year, they were able to overcome that, and, and were able to obviously dramatically increase what they were able to pick up.
So for, at the end of the day, I was at the multi-service center along with Sherri Edwards and Nick Wilson, and we were going to help sort the food that came in, and it was mentioned by the drivers that it was less food collected than the year before, and it does look like it from the grocery stores. The Waste Management donations, where were they, were they taken before Saturday to multi-service center?
I, I don't have that information, but we will get an answer for you.
Okay. Anyway, thank you very much, and thank you to our community for bearing us so much.
Councilmember Maloney? A lot of us put our cans out on our garbage pickup day, in a bag, and, and they picked those up, so they could have picked them up ahead of time.
Right, I was just wondering when they were turned into the multi-service center.
Deputy Mayor?
As I recall, it was the week before, that's when our notice came that week, well, it came the previous week, the notice to put on the, on the collector bins, and, and then it was, so it was, for us, it was Thursday, and I would also add that my recollection is that last year, it rained on our Thursday collection day, and that makes it difficult to, more difficult to put food out in a way that you're, you feel it's secure.
Raises a sense of caution.
Okay, that's all I was wondering.
Yes, I, thank you so much to all the volunteers who were there, it was, it was great, many of the council members went from, and myself, went from grocery store to grocery store and, and were there, and just the generosity of people, it was great, you would catch people on the way in, and then on the way out, it was just the generosity with all kinds of, of foodstuffs, and, and things that people don't really think about in regard to, that, that, you know, some things that they really don't get a lot of, which are diapers, especially later in age diapers, for, for those folks considering to giving to food banks, they have a lot of diapers, even, even actually when I went to the multi-service center of Food Bank today, and, and took a, you know, a little bit of a tour and looked at, at a lot of the food that was collected, one of the things that they don't get a lot of is formula, and they don't get the later age diapers, and so, keep that in mind, and the generosity of this community, I think, just never ceases to amaze me, and it's just, it was just so heartwarming to see that, and we went from, we started off in the southwest corner of, of the city, where that picture was at the Fred Meyer, and, and we worked our way throughout the community, and, and it was just, it was great, all throughout the community, people are really in a giving spirit, so, and actually, at the, at the 320th, the 320th Safeway, that's where we just, we saw all the cash, you know, coming in, it was just great, and it's going to be put to good use. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you, Terry, who runs the Food Bank at Multi Service Center, did tell us that they need large-sized diapers all the time because they get little ones, more often, and mittens, a lot of our folks that use those services need mittens, so for the public, that could be something that they could donate.
Those are things that are good to know, and, and we will incorporate that into our planning and marketing next year.
Very good, awesome, all right, thank you very much, and thank you, Council, for your support. And I'd also like to say a special thank you to, did Jerry Lynn get in the picture? Jerry Lynn, the Administrative Assistant for the Council, and actually, Kathy made it in the picture, Kathy to the far right in the red shirt, and her husband were there, but Jerry Lynn, who helps out with, with the Council and our office, just does a tremendous job, as does Kathy, Jerry Lynn went from store to store and really helped really kind of organize all of us, and organize everybody, so a special thanks to, to Jerry Lynn, and Kathy, and, and all of the staff. All right, so now moving on to the next item, we've got a real fun event in this community, actually, actually, we're going to have Marwan talk first, that's not the fun event, I'll, I'll talk, I'll talk about the chili cook-off when you're done, go ahead. This is Marwan Saloom, talking about Pacific Highway South, Phase 5 project update.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Member of the Council, this is, could be a very good event also. I'm here to give you a quick update, Pacific Highway South project started construction, the project limit is South 340th Street to South 359th Street, give you some milestone on the project, the total contract amount is $16,701,392, the contract was awarded to Graham Contracting LTD on August 9th, notice the proceed was issued to the contractor on September 9th, the first working day on the job was September 12th, and we are expecting the project to last till September 2018, so hopefully, the summer of 2018, the project will be completed. Giving the council and the citizens some update on the communication on the project, after the award of the project to the contractor, staff have sent a letter to all of the property owner and the business owner on Pacific Highway South, notifying them of the project, and the action that the council have taken for awarding the project to the contractor, and giving them the milestone of the project as when the project potentially is going to start and when it's going to be completed. After the notice of award, representative from the city, the contractor, and the construction management company walked the job, met with every business owner along the stretch of the project, provided their contact information, and asked the business owner if they are interested to receive a weekly email notifying them of the upcoming work for that project. So we have a system where our project engineer normally sends an email toward the end of the week, letting everybody know who's interested as what the schedule for the following week, and we solicited all of the email address from the business owner who are interested to receive those email, and if you are interested, please let, let us know, you could email us at the city and give us your email address, we'd be very happy to send you an update on a weekly basis. The construction activity for the next few months, the contractor working on the installation of erosion control, clearing the grubbing, lane configuration, as a matter of fact, tomorrow night, during the night. As a matter of fact, tomorrow night, during the night, the contractor will be doing a shift of traffic, which means that they're going to be removing all of the lane marker between 352nd and 359th and re-striping that section of the road. And the reason they are doing that, they are trying to shift all of those lane, all of the five lane, as far as possible to the west. That will create more of a work zone area on the east side where the contractor will be able to do all of the utility work. The contractor, as soon as that shift completed, they will be working on water main relocation, utility underground trench, and storm drainage system south of 348th. The contractor will also be working on retaining wall construction throughout the project. The reason that is something that he's going to be able to work on the, all of the limit of the project, because that work is mainly as far as possible from the lane work, so all what you really need to do, take one lane out of service while you're doing that type of work. The contractor planning on having four separate crew at a time, so you're going to see a lot of construction in different area within the project limit. Lane closure on the project approved between the hour of 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on the northbound and 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on the southbound. That conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any question the council may have.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Sappidawson?
Yeah, thank you. Is there a mechanism to inform people if they were not at the meeting but still want to be informed of the progress?
Of this project?
Yes.
I'm anticipating, yeah, we will be more than happy to let them know, but this meeting is televised, and hopefully, they will be able to see it on TV. But the information on the project is, there is a sign at both end of the project identifying the project, and most likely is going to have a phone number if they have any question they could call.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any other questions? All right, Marwan, before you head off the podium there, I wanted to say that you and your team did a fantastic job with the recycling event at Wild Waves this past Saturday. I know that myself and Councilmember Honda went through there. I had to drop off some things that, you know, just, you know, it's a great venue to be able to, you know, clean out either the garage or certain spare rooms, and it was really well organized. I'd like to throw a special shout out to our recycling expert, Jeanette Brizendine. Brizendine, and we also had Mercedes Tenuta, she was there as well, so it was great to see our staff there, and they just did, it was very well organized. You guys have it down to a science.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This is an event that we've been doing for a while, and seems like they got it perfected to the point that's clockwork. The weather did not cooperate. We only have about nine-hundred-and-seventy-five car coming through, but still, with this number of car, even though the weather did not stop them, so thank you very much for your recognition.
Thank you. It was great work on your staff, please pass it along. All right. I'd also like to call and raise attention to, at the farmer's market this weekend, starting at about 11:30, is one of the great traditions in our community, which is the chili cook-off. And we have one team by the police department, one team by the fire department, and a bunch of, several of the restaurants, and it's a great opportunity. Have some great chili, it's a, they give you these little serving bowls, so it's a great opportunity to get way too full for lunch, get a really reasonable cost for lunch with some cornbread, but really, most importantly, it really makes, and I say this all the time, I grew up in a really small town where the tallest building in town was a water tower, and with events like this really make Federal Way seem sometimes like a smaller town, like you can really get to know your neighbor. So I would really encourage you to come out to the farmer's market. Chief, anything to say about the, your contest coming up here, about the chili cook-off?
We're predicting a win, just like the basketball challenge.
All right, so keep it in mind for this Saturday, 11:30, at the Federal Way Farmer's Market, on the west side of the mall, essentially where the Sears parking lot is. So hope to see you there. All right, that's the conclusion of my report and emerging issues. We've got the most important part of the agenda, citizen comment. We do have a number of citizen comments, and it's great to see all the folks here. So as we've been doing, we started this with the September 1st meeting, I'll call a couple names in a row so people can sort of get on deck, if you will, and we can go through this, you know, in an efficient manner. So I'll call the first couple of names, and I'll keep doing that to make sure that we don't lose much time in this process. All right, the first name is Ron Beckerdite, and then Jeffrey Hastings, and Laura Olson. Actually, Ron, before we start, can we put a pause on that? Ron, can you hold on just for a second? I would like to recommend, we have our state representative here, Linda Coachmar, former council colleague and former mayor as well. Thank you so much for being here. State Representative Linda Coachmar's been following the IRG property warehouse thing very closely, and we talk, she talks to many of my colleagues here and myself as well, so thank you, Linda. Ron?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I am a resident of North Lake in the warehouse complex you just mentioned, and I just wanted to speak a little bit about, we came in possession of the warehouse or campus Federal Way offering memorandum this week, and was reading through it, and I was going to read some pieces out of it, but I only have three minutes, and I don't want to go into that, anybody can read it. It's very concerning, the concessions given through the 1994 agreement that's been, it goes through in perpetuity after warehouse, or why in the world, when warehouse leaves, that doesn't leave? The things, the concessions you're giving these companies are so out of bounds, and in my opinion unfair to every other business in this city. It's just, it doesn't make much sense, to the point of, they don't have to maintain the roads, they don't have to widen the roads, the 50-foot easement can go down to 25, the 70-foot building height can be waived, lots of different concessions that other people just don't have. And in reading that, there's a lot of comments by yourself in your letter about the beauty of this property, the serenity of the area, the view of Mount Rainier, the wonderful houses on the east side of North Lake, which, by the way, is the first time I've heard anything about people who actually live there. So as I, as I was going through there, not to focus on anything, but even last week, when we went through the speeches from both the city and from the fish plant and from IRG, nobody mentioned the people. Nobody did. And I think it's obvious that this came out in December 1st of 2014, so everybody knew what was going to happen, what was going down, but we didn't find out about it until, obviously, it was too late because we don't buy industrial property, therefore, going to go looking it up. Basically, alls I wanted to say is that I think this whole piece of property needs to be looked at. This process needs to slow down. If it gets, you put a fish factory on one end, the huge warehouse on the other end, we're not going to be able to get out of our homes. At this point, it seems to me like this is more or less poor execution of a bad plan, but the more I've thought about it, I think it's poor execution of no plan. So what I would ask, there's a lot of talk about moratorium, and I know that's an ugly word, nobody wants to stop or slow down, but I think we need to take a whole look at all of this property and see what the total effect is, not only on us who live there, but everybody in Federal Way who's losing a really, really nice piece of land and a place they can all enjoy.
Great. Thank you, Ron. Thank you very much. Ron, do you have a copy of that document that we can pass to the, that you can hand over, that we can pass to the council? I just had a request from a council member, and maybe if you could just give it to our city clerk, and that way, while we're listening to other comments, folks can look at it.
Just regarding my comment.
All right. Thank you, Ron. We're going to get this back to you when the meeting's over.
I'm not sure if it's intact. It's been fairly far.
And if it's not intact, we'll make sure we get a full copy to the council as well for their review as well. Okay, all right. After Ron, we had Jeffrey Hastings. Jeffrey?
Mayor, council, good to see you again. City government exists to represent the citizens. You are elected by the citizens to represent the citizens, and when you look at any city, it's made up of property and people. Now, the property and the buildings exist to meet the needs of the citizens. The houses exist for the people, hospitals and shopping centers exist to meet the needs of the community, parks and recreation areas exist to improve the quality of life for the citizens. It's not the other way around. People don't exist for the buildings and the property. And zoning is a tool to make sure that the buildings and the property best match the needs and the vision of the citizens of the city. Zoning should enhance the quality of life for the citizens, but sometimes, there's a flaw in the zoning that allows the quality of life for the citizens to be diminished. And in those times, those with the power to repair the zoning have an obligation to step up and examine what can be done. Again, sometime that takes a pause to slow things down, to give time to examine the details. You have another tool in your process that allows this pause, and that's a moratorium. And boy, I got to believe, I believe you guys all want to do the right thing. I really do. And I believe that if six months prior to Orca Bay's application, if you had seen in the news, and it was there, but I didn't see it either, that Orca Bay had had an ammonia spill that shut down three miles of I-405 in Renton and sent a number of people to the hospital, and somebody said, and our zoning has a loophole that will allow them to move their process right next to our neighborhoods, you would have been rushing to get a moratorium to change that zoning for the safety of your citizens. It's already too late now, though, to adjust the zoning in reference to Orca Bay, and soon, it will be too late to enact a moratorium to prevent the next giant warehouse from being introduced. The window of time is two weeks shorter than it was when we last made this request at the last council meeting, so time's getting shorter. Now, have you all seen the aerial photo of the next warehouse that's superposed on the property? It's about the same size as the Commons Mall. It's really close, within a half an acre of size of the mall, and it's supposed to have 140 semi bay doors? The exit ramps to 320th back up onto I-5 in both directions now. Cars are backed up onto the freeway now. So picture adding hundreds more semis each day, all turning to go over to Warehouse Way to this giant warehouse. Now, how many trucks are going to be able to fit between those, between those traffic lights? And of course, they're all going to have to come back out that way, too. Maybe they'll sneak down to Peaslee Canyon, but how does this improve the quality of life for the citizens? So what the citizens really want is to know that you genuinely care more for their well-being and interest than the interest of outside business, and that you believe you really represent them. Please prove that you do care and represent the people. Move quickly to enact a moratorium before it's too late. And seriously, does anyone actually believe a six-month delay will crash the property value? Generally, property values increase with time, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we've got Laura Olson, and then Vicki Kirchner, and Brian Tabram, and Brent Cleary.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and the community. I'm Laura Olson. I'm a Federal Way resident. I'm a chartered organization representative of Christ Lutheran Church in Federal Way of Boy Scout Troop 336, Cub Scout Pack 313. Christ Lutheran also hosts Girl Scout Troop 41162. At the city council meeting on September 6th, it was reported that the Pacific Harbors Council of the Boy Scouts had inquired about potentially clearing dangerous diseased trees on the property of Camp Killworth. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of this cutting. Trees that threaten the safety of scouts, whether on trails or in campsites, or trees that are sick and dying, should be removed. That's a reasonable request, which I wholeheartedly support. However, looking at this from a business perspective, the current situation at Pacific Harbors is that experiencing financial difficulties, they've closed five out of their six camp properties. They state in minutes from their executive board meeting in February of 2016 that they don't intend to maintain, fund, or use the closed camps, including Killworth. The same document projects that hundreds of thousands of dollars will be made from the sale of timber from these camps. So tonight, what I'm asking of the council is that if Pacific Harbors does indeed request a permit for tree cutting at Camp Killworth, please scrutinize it. Confirm with your arborist which trees. Are they indeed unsafe or diseased? If so, there's certainly no harm in approving the request, but please draw the line there. Do not allow extra trees to be taken from this property to cover the expense, because cutting down and selling trees, that is called logging. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. And Laura, please know, that is exactly our plan. We do have at least, at least one, I believe, two arborists on staff, and we're going to be working with them when we receive that application to make sure that's exactly the case. It's a treasured property, and we've got several council members that are especially in tune to that, so thank you very much. All right, Vicki Kirchner. And then, again, after Vicki, Brian Tabram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Linda, Mr. Mesmer. Vicki Kirchner from World Vision. Following up on the meeting on September 1st, where the citizens and I outlined some significant concerns regarding the Orca Bay proposed development that actually sits kitty-corner to World Vision. I sent several of you, all of you, an email, and some of you acknowledged it, and I appreciate that, but I wanted to follow up a little bit so others could hear my comments as well. Since that September 1st meeting, I'm aware that in addition to the number of the concerns that were raised that evening by the citizens and by World Vision, there are new concerns now, and we've heard it referenced already, to the possible ammonia leak that Orca Bay had already experienced in their current facility some years ago. During the September 1st meeting, Mr. Mesner, you had mentioned that you felt badly that you hadn't gotten ahead of some of, because there were some rumors, you hadn't gotten ahead of that, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you have also suggested that there are a lot of rumors out there floating around. What I'd like to suggest is, I'd like to see a little more transparency, both on behalf of the city, just so that people know, the citizens know, that their concerns are being heard and that they're going to be acted on, and understanding, too, what the process is. But also, Mr. Mesmer, I would encourage you, I know I reached out to you before the meeting and gave you my business card, I'd like to talk to you a little about World Vision's experience. You know, we moved up here 21 years ago from Southern California. We were a California corporation that was going to be building on Lake Colarni. I know a lot of the citizens were really concerned. Quadrant was the developer at the time, Mary Gates was actually acting on behalf of the city, and then I also attended all of the meetings. I came up every month from Southern California, and we met with the residents of Lake Colarni and those nearby, and we worked with the developer, and we actually changed some of the design of the building. So I'm suggesting, a six-month moratorium just hits the pause button and allows everybody to understand fully what is IRG's use or planned use for the entire property, but also gives everyone an opportunity to come onto the same page. Otherwise, I think it's just going to get more argumentative as we go. Thank you.
Brian Tabram, Brent Cleary, and then Julie Cleary. Sir?
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor and City Council members. I am Brian Tabram, and back in February, I spoke at a city council meeting in an effort to save Camp Killworth. Despite the continued efforts by the Friends of Camp Killworth to offer financial support to save this piece of history, it is becoming increasingly clear that Pacific Harbors Council plans to dispose of the property. In a recent email exchange with Pacific Harbors Council, the following was received in bold and underlined text. "If the city of Federal Way does not issue a permit for the safety cut of the trees, the camp will not be allowed to be opened for any scouting activities and will be given back to the Killworth family." I question whether the word "safety" is being used to falsely justify a plan to log trees for profit. Current communication and past history of Pacific Harbors Council point in the direction of logging for profit. A recent email from Pacific Harbors Council suggests revenue in excess of 10,000 will be generated from the trees at Killworth. A 2009 investigation conducted by Hearst Newspapers found dozens of cases over the past 20 years of Boy Scout councils nationwide logging prime woodlands to generate quick money. The investigation found the following. Scouting councils have logged across at least 34,000 acres. More than 100 scouting councils have conducted timber harvests. Councils have conducted at least 60 clear cuts and 35 salvage harvests. Several councils submitted logging plans with inaccurate and incomplete information, and in some cases, disregarded rules or conditions established to protect wildlife, streams, or other resources. The investigation specifically mentioned Pacific Harbors Council in an article titled "Bending the Rules." a denuded hillside piled with logging debris at the Pacific Harbor Council's Camp Delazine offer testament to how even amid today's stagnant timber markets, trees here are like gold. But to get that money, the scouts' logging broke state rules meant to protect endangered salmon, a consultant said. The council's logger misidentified the type of waterway next to the harvest site, did not properly define a potentially unstable slope that posed risk of discharging sediment into the waterway and potentially onto scouting campsites, and failed to leave enough trees to meet the required size of buffer next to the waterway, said Chris Mendoza, a conservation biologist hired by Hearst to review the council's logging plan. These are blatant rule violations here, Mendoza said. These were some big valuable trees. It looks like they wanted to take as many as possible and broke the rules to do it. I raise this awareness tonight in an effort to protect Camp Kilworth from potentially questionable logging practices. I sincerely appreciate the attention and oversight the council has provided to this property and respectfully ask for your continued support. Thank you."
And we are, as to Brent and Laura, we're watching this very closely, and we'll continue to monitor this very, very closely, and we'll keep everybody informed. Brent Cleary, and then Julie Cleary.
Hello, thank you. Hi, my name is Brent Cleary. I've been a resident of Federal Way my whole life, and I'm here to talk about the use of the Warehouser campus. Just a general comment, the campus has been a part of the community, as far as I know, since 1969, over 50 years. And regarding the current plans, I think it's kind of a shame how it's actually being planned to be used. You couldn't build a campus like this in any city nowadays for less than hundreds of millions, I'm assuming. Even with that, it's 50 years of growth, not just history, that we're losing with the trees and the nature and everything, and the planning. So I'm sorry to see that it seems to have been sort of sold out from the city. As Seattle continues to grow, and as the surrounding cities continue to grow, areas like this are gonna become more and more scarce, and something that was kind of a pride of part of our city is sort of being lost. So I hope we can reconsider that, and when considering the moratorium. Thank you.
Julie Cleary.
That was my son. That made me cry. Everything makes me cry, right? Okay, so I have a little bit of history. I just kind of want to go back in time. August, my theme is, we've been here before. August 17th, 1998, so there was a land use transportation committee meeting. They're going to look at updating the comprehensive plan, 1998 comprehensive plan update, and Jeanie Burridge, you were on this one. Then, all of a sudden, August 21st, oh my, Lake residents, oh, they're in a, they're in a, oh no, they heard this is gonna happen, and Roger Hazard has requested a meeting, and they're all getting together because they're worried that, oh no, Warehouser wants to change the property from conservancy to urban development, and everyone, we need to get a meeting together. Doesn't this sound familiar? Okay, so, one of the residents, Mr. Jack Rosenau, who we personally bought our house from, August 26th writes to Mayor Ronald Gents, all the reasons why it shouldn't be, the beautiful, the lake, the eagles, all the things we are talking about now that we want to save that are still there because it did get saved, and so I won't go through and read that whole thing, but this is all like in a matter of just a week, this is happening. And they, oh, oh, but now, he just got a message that Federal Way, Warehouser wants to meet with the citizens on North Lake, and they want to discuss the zoning matter, and they want our input. That's good, okay. So during that time, though, they were starting their petition, and I can give you this, if you guys don't remember, I probably sent that to you. But now, August 26th, so we're just a few days later, hold everything. We've been in contact by Warehouser and Quadrant, and the City of Federal Way, and the management review has been delayed to allow the North Lake residents to have input, so that's really nice, I like that. And then, my last piece is October 6th, the letter from Warehouser, 1998, to dear North Lake residents. "The proposed change that we requested, which was in the '94 agreement, we originally requested to change this property from the shoreline designation, would be consistent with the other properties around the lake." Yeah, okay, that might make sense, "but at no point did we have any plans to develop the land. So we've decided to reevaluate the original request, and we've determined it is in an area we would be unlikely to develop for corporate use. This is in large part due to the existing conditions on the property, including natural constraints such as wetlands, both because we have determined that this area is not likely to be needed for development, and because we share our neighbors' concern for the quality of the environment around North Lake, we've decided not to pursue the original request for a shoreline designation change. We want to leave it as conservancy, which has a 200-foot buffer." Did I get a double beep? Am I getting extra beep?
I think she hit the wrong button.
Oh, okay, because I just had like two quick sentences here. So, since all of this, since Warehouser announced that they were moving, somehow, this conservancy area is not on the maps anymore, and where did it go? So I believe this is another reason that I'm asking you to consider a moratorium, get a legal review on the agreement, and find out what happened to that 200-foot conservancy zone. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Julie. Julie? Can you get the council that? I know you've got your copy there, but can you either send that?
I just got on my notes, but I will send you the package. Everything in it, I sent one before, but I'll send it again.
Very good.
I did send it to Brian Wilson in March. Got that?
Okay. All right, well, so we'll go through. Yeah, just let's.
I'll make sure you guys all get copies.
Thank you, Julie. Let's make sure that we communicate, and Brian will look through it and see if we can circulate that back. If we can't find it, we'll let you know. Thank you, Julie. All right. All right, new list. Dan Strifert is first, Lori Seacrest, and then Cindy Flanagan, and then Terry Thomas. Terry, Uncle Sam Thomas.
Yeah.
Dan?
My name is Dan Strifert. I am currently the vice chair of the South King County Group of the Washington Sierra Club. I just recently found out about the proposed new development of the Fish Warehouse on the former Warehouser property. This seems like a tragic misuse of this historic site. One has to wonder if replacing this wonderful park-like complex with warehouses and paved parking areas for a bit of tax revenue and a few jobs is really what the city now needs. I moved into this area in the early 70s, when Federal Way was unincorporated. The citizens soon realized that to get any real benefit from the numerous businesses in the area, that incorporation into a city would result in a sizable tax revenues. This has been a great success for the area. Now the city sees some 430 acres of empty land next to I-5 and can only think of more tax revenue. Is this really the best use for this property? The tax base has grown since incorporation and continues to grow. What is not growing is empty space, wetlands, and parks. This property has served as both a business park and a recreational park for hiking and other activities for years. We cannot replace it at any cost. Building warehouses with small buffers of trees around them will completely destroy the character of this property. Please take advantage of this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I join the others. I join the others here in asking for a moratorium on future permits until a master plan with extensive citizen input and a more complete SEPA process can be put together for this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Lori Seacrest, Cindy Flanagan, and Terry Thomas.
Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor and City Council and Neighbors. I've spoken to you twice before. During the study session, I discussed the legality of the 1994 pre-annexation agreement, and at the September 6th city council meeting, I asked you all to think about the vision of our community and building community trust. But tonight, I'm gonna talk to you about public safety. The residential neighborhoods surrounding the Warehouser campus predate the 1994 concomit agreement and the construction of the Warehouser headquarters itself. This neighborhood has the same rights to protection against adjacent industrial development as every other residential neighborhood in Federal Way. Neither the city nor Warehouser had in 1994, or have ever had any authority whatsoever to revoke the protections afforded to our neighborhoods by Federal Way Revised Code, the Washington State Environmental Policy Acts, the Development Regulations of the Washington Growth Management Act, and the Puget Sound Region Vision 2040, in terms of transitional zoning and industrial development. We intend to pursue every avenue available to us, up to and including legal action against the city and anyone seeking to invalidate our rights as citizens of Federal Way. I make this point only because we have heard repeatedly about the fear of lawsuits by IRG if the city council exercises its clear authority to impose a moratorium. Neither the council nor the mayor should think that legal action against the city will be avoided by accommodating IRG's plans to forever change the former Warehouser campus. I have said this before, and I'm gonna say it again, these proposed projects will be tied up by continuing legal action all the way to the State Supreme Court if necessary. Numerous interested parties, agencies, and institutes have joined our cause and are willing, ready, and able to exert their influence to effect a development plan for the Warehouser campus that is in the long-term interests of the citizens of Federal Way rather than the short-term interests of IRG. The support we are receiving is growing every day. We currently have close to 900 people who've signed our petition. To date, we have had almost 12,000 hits on our savewarehousercampus.org website, and just this week alone, over 11,000 people have viewed our Sav Warehouser Campus Facebook And honestly, we barely just begun. It will be political suicide in the next election for any elected official to have put IRG's desire for a quick profit and the city's fear of lawsuits above the legitimate rights and concerns of the citizens of Federal Way. Now is the time to do what's right and stop this madness before it goes any further. You will want to be on the right side of this issue, as it may well define your political legacy and the future health, safety, and well-being of the citizens of Federal Way. As protectors of our city, you have the opportunity to do the right thing to make a better Federal Way and protect its citizens by adopting a moratorium on the acceptance of development and building permits in the CP1 and the OP1 zones, so you can get sound, unbiased, legal advice on the numerous concerns the citizens have continued to raise.
Cindy Flanagan, and then Terry Thomas. Cindy?
Hi, I'm Cindy, representing Rainier Audubon. I'd like to first ask you to please consider to encourage your city staff to expedite this historical preservation ordinance as soon as possible, so they can bring it to the table of the Planning Commission and the Land Use Committee, so that we can protect iconic historical treasures like Warehouser Way. And clearly, tonight, hearing about Kilworth, you know, if we have this ordinance in place, that, sorry, I'm trying to get used to bifocals, if we have this ordinance in place, you know, we can get funding and preserve some of these important iconic areas. Number two, we'd like to ask council to issue a moratorium for comprehensive review of Warehouser campus lands. The dismantling of Warehouser campus has significant impact on the wildlife, the public, the city, neighboring cities, the state, and the nation. There's a threat to public welfare, health, and safety, and there's a need to investigate environmental protection of this valuable habitat. It's been 20 days since 60-plus speakers at the study session, public comment asked for a moratorium, and two weeks since another 40-plus speakers spoke at the city council for comment, and we need indication that there's gonna be a moratorium. In, just on a side, in spring of 2013, King County Solid Waste tried to site a garbage transfer station in North Auburn, and 100 citizens went to the Auburn City Council and asked for a resolution from the city to King County Council to oppose the citing of the garbage transfer station. And like the speakers that are here tonight, the commenting was well-researched and well-presented, people were well-behaved, and it was very respectful, and the council listened to the people and voted unanimously for a resolution, and never before had that been done. And the council listened to the people and made a proactive decision, and we ask you to do the same. In June, in June of 2016, your council issued a moratorium on multifamily housing, and there was opposition by some that the moratorium wasn't on the agenda. The then-city attorney, Amy Pierceall, defended council's decision, stating, "The purpose of a moratorium is to halt everything in place as is. If too much advance notice is given, it could ruin the purpose of a moratorium in that people could try to put their applications in and thwart the process." So delaying or not issuing a moratorium will result in more land use applications and further piecemealing of Warehouser campus. So please issue a moratorium tonight.
We've got Terry Thomas, then Robin Cook, and then Cora Tahigi. Terry?
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, Representative Kochmar, and any other elected officials in the room. My name is Terry Thomas. I'm a resident of North Lake, and I'm here tonight to talk about golf. Golf is an acronym, and for, on the North Lake situation, the G stands for Great Opportunity to Do the Right Thing, okay? And it also stands for, the North Lake people feel like we have absolutely been used because we're just gullible. We've opened ourselves up as a community, we have our 4th of July parade, we've been inclusive of everybody, including the mayor, and a lot of the stuff that's been going on here now is, was well-known, yet I think you should have recused yourselves from participating just knowing that this was coming down the road. The O is for Obligation. You as council members, you as a mayor, you're here to look out for the citizens of this area, and especially the citizens of this area. We're not worried about Tacoma, we're not worried about Auburn, we're worried about Federal Way. And it's your obligation to make sure that everybody gets a fair shake. And we didn't get a fair shake. We didn't get the notice that we should have gotten months before, and probably because maybe we didn't read the paper. That obligation is gonna stick with you, and you're gonna have to live with whatever you do. The next thing is the legacy. You will be remembered for creating this mess. Even though you were probably not originally involved in this, because you're dealing with a piece of paper that was written in 1994, you're still the stewards of this. So you need to really look closely at yourselves and think of what you're showing your families and your children, and what legacy you're presenting to the citizens of Federal Way if that property gets demised or diminished in its ability to be successful. The other thing is, is that you are creating a F. The F is for Financial Gain and for Financial Loss. Your short-term financial gain has cost the citizens that are the homeowners and property owners around North Lake, has cost us a significant amount of money. We've probably lost about a third of our value of our homes because we've got a plant being put in, an industrial plant put in the area. And again, that's gonna take and diminish the value, you're gonna get less tax revenue because I'm gonna appeal it to King County, because you've created an industrial zone where there really isn't one. you've created an industrial zone where there really isn't one. So the fact of the matter is, look deep, look hard, do the right thing, and I appreciate you giving me a moment to speak my mind.
Robin Cook, and then Cora Stahighi. And then we've got a letter.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and others distinguished guests along with my neighbors. And last year, Heartland, as Brian Wilson indicated, was the broker for this deal with Warehouser and IRG. And in their prepared materials, they said there were 300 acres of developed land and 40 acres on the Northlake track. I am a part of a group that is looking at that Northlake track, the part that -- and what we envision is Warehouser Way to the lake. So all of that, and yet it looks like in the Heartland materials, they cut that off partially. But we're really looking at that whole section. And we met last week with the person that's helping us kind of broker this deal as far as with IRG and the city. And so our current plan is to have a letter of intent presented to IRG, and I hope Tom, as the representative of IRG, will accept that letter of intent so we can get a concept plan. Our concept and our vision right now is that we would link Rhodey, Bonzi, and this Northlake track that we have envisioned. On that track are the two project houses. The one at the south end of the lake would become a learning center so we could have people from Audubon, Ducks Unlimited, all those individuals help get the word out on what's important with our lake habitat and the wildlife in that area. And we could preserve that with the trails and have that learning center, as well as get out information from our Lake Management District on noxious weed control. We've had that ongoing issue, and it would be a great avenue to present that information. What I need from the city, we know what I need from IRG now, I need them to accept the letter of intent. Once we get that vision and that concept plan, I need the city to be really a full and active partner with us to get this taken care of so that we can preserve that section of land, the Rhodey, the Bonzi Gardens, so we have something left in that campus. Lastly, the development plans for Warehouser. We've heard a lot of information about the agreement between Warehouser and the city. Part of that agreement is to help protect some elements of the Warehouser thing. And you only have to look at the tech center to know what was kind of guiding some of that with the forest buffers, the landscaping, the limiting on the impervious surfaces. So I ask the city to really look closely. Are the development plans being submitted now representative of what Warehouser had in mind when they did that plan? And does those buffers really obscure the type of development they're doing, like the tech center? It would be good to go see that visual representation. Thank you.
Cora Stahighi. Cora?
Good evening. You had previously seen the aerial photo that's in front, showing the different sizes and comparisons. I just wanted to provide you another comparison. The development on the north end of the campus is bigger than Husky Field, the buildings, the Husky Field, Safeco Field, CenturyLink Field, Key Arena, and Tacoma Dome combined. I wanted to give you a perspective of the magnitude we're looking at, be able to visualize what it is we're talking about. And the part of the reason for that is, one of the purposes for the approval of the agreement, zoning agreement in 94 by the city council at that time, was to maintain the character of the campus. It's hard for any reasonable person to believe the character of the campus would be preserved with 44 continuous acres of deforestation.
We've got a letter that I'll ask the city clerk to read from Mary Ellis, and as that is being forwarded over to our city clerk, let's get a couple other speakers ready to go. We've got Jerry Graham next, and then -- oh, honey, my glasses. Mark Talbert, Richard Pearson, and Karen Langridge. Please. Yes.
Letter from Tom and Mary Ellis says, "Dear Mayor Farrell and Federal Way city council members, is nothing beautiful, environmentally unique, or cultural significance to be left for future generations that reside in the Federal Way area? It seems that all sites are -- all sites that hold such designations are under assault recently, including Camp Killworth again. The gains of logging and altering such sites are so short-sighted in the big picture of the impact it will have on citizens and the environment that it's terribly discouraging that we are having to go through this again. The funds that will be generated by logging Camp Killworth are a pittance of the debt that the Pacific Harbors Council, BSA, have accrued since last fight to save this last 25 acres of coastal high-bank forest in Federal Way. Due to past actions and statements by the Pacific Harbors Council Board Representatives, we urge the Federal Way mayor and city council to be vigilant when it comes to permits and how they're actually applied to logging as requested. Why are diseased and dangerous trees of such a concern when effectively the PHC has shut down Camp Killworth? They canceled all events scheduled for Camp Killworth, including scout activities as well as potential fundraising activities. By the deed does not mean that they have effectively abandoned Camp Killworth. Do they have the right to do anything on the property if there's any doubt about their ownership of the camp? Keeping a caretaker on the property means nothing when he is not paid by PHC for the job and instead must pay the bills and expenses to remain there. The group fighting to save Camp Killworth wants to honor the Killworth deed by keeping the property active for Boy Scouts youth as well as other youth groups in the Tacoma-Federal Way area. The PHC board mentioned the STEM education program being an activity that would -- that could take place at the camp, yet for such a unique environmental site in the intent of William Killworth for the property, is that a good fit? Perhaps if STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math would add in an environmental component to their curriculum, this is rare but accessible site could continue to educate and benefit the youth in our South King-North Pierce County area. Camp Killworth could be used to teach scouts as well as students in the Federal Way School District about environment and how to preserve what little we have left. It could be a unique opportunity to incorporate such a program. The property could serve a much greater goal by just adding funds into an already deficit account. Please consider and support the efforts of the group fighting to save Camp Killworth. I wish we could be at the council meeting to show our support, but we hope this letter will add emphasis to our efforts. Sincerely, Mary and Tom Ellis."
All right, thank you. All right, now Jerry Graham is first, and then Mark Talbert, and then Richard Pearson.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. I'm here once again to ask you to please, please, please adopt an moratorium. I did email, and I hope that everybody got emails from me. I got a couple of responses back thanking them for the -- thanking me for the emails. But in the email, I pointed out that the best way for the city is to step out of the process and have a separate hire a consultant, somebody who will be unbiased in making the best recommendations for that property, likewise an attorney outside so that you're not being challenged by your attorney or by somebody who says you should follow your attorney's recommendation. The Warehouser property can be an iconic -- something in perpetuity, you can look back and say, "We, the people that are here representing the people, have made this decision, and look what we've done." Because you are, the government is of the people, by the people, and for the people. And so we, the people, are asking you to please, please adopt that moratorium. Please step out of the process. You're not being challenged by what you're -- if you go against maybe what your staff recommends or what your attorney recommends by stepping out, hiring a separate consultant that will not be biased as to what the best property. I personally feel that numerous corporate offices that will blend in with the property could be the best situation. Not processing, not manufacturing, not warehousing, but smaller or maybe larger core processes that can be designed and built right in with where -- so you've got a huge corporate campus that can be just a beautiful, beautiful property for my next 30 years while I'm around, hopefully, Lord willing, and the creeks don't rise. It's just, you've got to do something like that. You just cannot move forward the way it is. It's -- we built a house 10, 12 years ago out there. My wife's born and raised out in the area here, and out by Northlake, on Northlake, actually. And Councilmember Burbidge, you were just a couple doors down from us. I recently had one of our neighbors that had wanted to expand, and this has to do with a notice I just got, but wanted to expand her deck by three feet, put in six posts to hold that deck up. I met with some of the council member because she couldn't get any -- or not, excuse me, some of the staff members, she couldn't get any farther on that. And I had staff member come out, she had to be 200 and some odd feet from a wetland before she could put this in. And they said, "You have to hire a -- anyway, you have to spend $1,000 for a specialist." And that specialist then would determine whether you are required to do whatever. I asked the question, "Well, let's just say, 'Okay, we're within 200 feet. We're within 200 feet. Now what do we do?" "Well, you can't do anything." So you want her to spend $1,000 for the geologist to tell her, "You can't do anything?" So I guess the reason I bring that up is I recently read that maybe there was some changes in this policy of 25 feet back you can -- from a wetland you can build, or 50 to 25 feet. Excuse me. Thank you much for your time.
Thank you, Jerry.
Appreciate it.
Mark Talbert, and then Richard Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, council members. I also want to thank the citizens tonight of Federal Way. I just, I'm so impressed by these recent council meetings with the discourse we've had. It's such a well-informed, just -- you are informing me of everything that's going on. So I applaud everyone that's spoken so far and spoken on previous nights. But I want to kind of change the subject because I want to ask a question that I think's important. I'm very interested in the diversity commission's plan, but I do want to speak to a diversity issue. I've spoken to some folks about we don't see enough diversity in our community here in Federal Way, at least I don't feel so. I didn't originally grow up here, but I've been a 14-year resident of Federal Way. I love the city, and I'm thankful to see everybody speaking here tonight because I can tell they love their city. But I want to ask everybody, how many people of color do you know? How many immigrants do you know? How many refugees do you know? It's an important question to ask yourself because there's a lot of conversations going around. You can see them in the news every day, a very anti-immigrant kind of speak. And I think we have an opportunity here to really welcome immigrants here, and I don't think we're doing a good enough job in our community here. Because I don't know if anybody follows what's going on in Seattle, but Seattle's becoming a very white city. We have a -- we're very lucky here to have a very diverse community, but how many of those folks do we actually know? And I'm very lucky to work with a lot of these immigrants, and I know their struggles. And I also know that they come here and they migrate here with business ideas, that they come here with passion, and we're failing them here in the United States at large, and we're failing them here in Federal Way. And particularly the younger people because they're struggling to integrate. And I don't think we do a good enough job welcoming them to our community. And I don't know if -- it's something I've become familiar with is called the Seattle Freeze, and where people don't look at you and when you're walking down the street and say, "Hi, hello," I know that's a simple thing. But whenever you put your head down, you don't look someone in their eyes. It doesn't really make them feel welcome. And I just, I'm just speaking to the fact that we do have a diverse community here in Federal Way, but do we see them? Are we doing enough to kind of make sure that community thrives here instead of pushing them out when things grow? All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mark. And after Richard Pearson, we've got Karen Langridge. Richard?
I have come before you in two previous council meetings with questions that remain unanswered relative to the allocation of a food processing plant to corporate park zone and confusion in other pre-annexation agreements for some rules but more current rules for others. I've also talked about how the process of permitting has become easier since the Warehouser Corporation headquarters property was announced for sale, which I believe undermines public confidence in our city government. In the effort to restore public confidence, I present the following reasons why now is the time to act on the moratorium. One, first primarily to protect myself and my wife's health and safety. Zoning changes have been ignored for over 20 years since the annexation agreement with Warehouser, and not updating puts at risk health and safety because of the omissions of current scientific knowledge and development laws as required by the Growth Management Act and so forth from things as increased road accidents, toxic chemical releases, and so forth. Second, I am certain that the piecemealing of the applications in the corporate park zone result in cumulative impacts on my health and safety that will not be known until all the permits have been approved and construction completed. If the first permit application is approved for manufacturing in the corporate park zone, it will create a precedence for the entire corporate park zone to become a manufacturing zone. Third, I visited with most of the candidates for the director of the community development position, and without exception, they all said the solution to the issues with the corporate park zoning needed to be viewed in the context of a total city plan. Fourth, as you already have questions regarding apartment permit and have a moratorium, you have a great opportunity to integrate the two efforts to obtain a more encompassing planning solution to maintaining the desirability of Federal Way as a place to live. Fifth, manufacturing zone in Warehouser does not exist in the recent comprehensive 2040 plan for Puget Sound regional development developed by elected officials of the region including Federal Way. Six, the cumulative impacts of roads and other services provided by the city will cost more over the long term than the short-term revenues obtained by billing permits and increased property text. I have not seen an analysis that demonstrates otherwise. Finally, what do I want to see our city become? Do we want a city that includes industrial development with low-wage jobs and degradation to our environment, or a city with an attractive office park attracting high-paying jobs from around the country and the world to work and live in a city known for its protection of the environment and a place to renew our lives in nature? That is a community that we came to over 40 years ago and will be attractive to countless people who flock to the Pacific Northwest for its environmental amenities. I implore you, call for the moratorium on corporate and office park zoning applications so we can see how you stand on the issue. Do the right thing. Our future depends on your leadership.
Karen Langridge, then Valerie Rhodes, and then David Lang. Or Long.
Okay, I was a little hot when I wrote this, so we'll see how it goes. Hi, my name is Karen Langridge, and I'm here to voice my concern about the proposed construction on the former Warehouser campus. I hope by now you're all starting to realize that this project will be your legacy, just like Terry said. This will be your legacy. I know you hoped it would be the Performing Arts Center, but it's going to be the Warehouser campus. If you allow a fish processing plant to be built near I-5 and Highway 18, Federal Way will turn into that smelly place between Seattle and Tacoma. Commuters will hate being stuck in traffic near there, which always happens, and they'll avoid getting off the freeway where it smells like riding fish. The aroma of Tacoma will be long-forgotten if the proposed fish processing plant is Yeah. I was wondering what exactly is the benefit to the city of this plant being built? Is there a performance incentive of some sort that the city is going to be getting from this? Is it purely tax-based? It's not bringing any new jobs. It's going to destroy the forest and the wetlands and the wildlife. It will create even worse traffic jams, noise, and pollution. Not to mention that the fact that it will make the prestigious headquarters building virtually un-leasable to any upstanding respectable corporate entity, nobody is going to want to look at that fish processing plant or smell it. So after you approve the destruction of the best thing about living in East Federal Way, the city will have to deal with the very real likelihood of thousands of lawsuits from local residents. from local residents who immediately find their property values cut in half, were unable to sell our homes due to the fish smell that will never go away, and living in constant fear of an ammonia leak. Many of those homeowners will go from having equity in their homes to being immediately and irrevocably underwater on their mortgages. Those are very big damages to intentionally inflict on the east side residents. And clearly, you are intentionally inflicting these damages as the property is not even zoned for industrial. I urge each and every one of you to think long and hard before you approve this project, because there will be very real consequences for all of us. Your names will forever be attached to this project. I know there's enough support here for preserving the integrity of the Warehouser campus that I think it's safe to say that none of you will survive reelection if this property is irresponsibly developed. That's simply the reality of politics when you don't support the citizens that you're sworn to serve.
Valerie Rhodes, and then David Long, and then Walter Brooks. Dr. Walter Brooks.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and my former, or my current neighbors here in Fedaway. I come to you without question about the Warehouser property despite my concerns of it. I really have a concern about people. The transient, the homeless situation here in Fedaway, you yourself, Mayor, have commented that there's 150% spike in this situation, this tragedy that's happening in our community since 2015, that there's over 100,000 put aside for the next two years to help this, this, this crisis, if you will call it that. And my question is, what is being done for this?
Go ahead and finish your comments, and I can, we can talk.
My question is, what is being done for this? What are we doing as a community to help remedy this, this tragedy? What are we doing to save our property values? I represent not only as a homeowner here in Fedaway, but as a business owner and a commercial property owner. And I can tell you that when I find needles on my property, it's disturbing. When I see a pathway that children use to go to school where there's drug paraphernalia because of transients doing what they are doing, not only drug use, but littering and using the facilities of the woods to their own discretion, there's a problem. So I'm, I'm really concerned what we're doing as a community for this, the safety issues with this. Maybe a proposal is to use the Warehouser property as an outreach for them. We get a park, we use the building, and we stop the fish. But something really needs to be done, because this is really a horrible situation. We have encampments that you yourself have said should not be here in our own backyards, on the buffers of our green belts of our communities. So really concerned and really hope that something is done sooner than later to help with this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Valerie. And Valerie, Valerie. So I wanted to get you, I wanted to let you finish before I, before I started talking, because your, your three minutes were going. We actually have a homeless services and encampment initiative that we started as a result of a number of these homeless, homeless encampments, many of which were actually abandoned, and they were acres and acres of just, you know, needles and waste and accumulated garbage. One of which started a fire, there was a fire just north of, of Steel Lake back in March, where two propane tanks exploded and five trees went up in flames. That was really the impetus, to go out into the woods, figure out exactly what we've going. In fact, Deputy Chief Steve Neal, Deputy Chief, can you please stand? Deputy Chief Steve Neal is one of the two individuals that, and actually, he's the lead on the homeless services encampment initiative. And we've cleaned up many of these encampments. When we hear about these encampments on, on public property, we clean them up. People do not have a right to, to camp illegally on city property. That explosion and that fire that occurred that endangered a whole row of houses, that was on private property. And that took a tremendous amount of time and effort to work with the landowner to get that cleaned up. Even in anticipation of our summer camp, in which we had, you know, I forget exactly what the number of campers were, but before the summer camp started at our community center, we had to clean out several encampments in the woods behind and just north of the community center. So a tremendous amount of effort and, and cleaning has gone in to making sure that we are eradicating these, this destruction, these needles, the, those kinds of things. So for folks listening at home, folks here, and for Valerie, what I would suggest is, if you, if you see or are aware of illegal camping or a situation, make sure you let us know about it. We'll let our deputy chief, we'll let our police department. It's been a multidisciplinary effort to make sure that we address that. But that's only part of the equation. These are human beings. These are people that are, you know, fathers, mothers, children, you know, and, and, you know, they're, everybody's somebody's child. And if, and if my son, or, you know, was, was in one of these homeless camps, I would want somebody to try to pull me out of these woods and, and try to end this horrible cycle. You're absolutely right. The council did step up and funded for two consecutive years, $50,000 of funding, to help that intermediate act of, of this day center, which is to give people referrals to service, to help them climb out of that desperate cycle of homelessness. And, and many of which, a lot of which is drug addiction, opiate addiction. So I would encourage you, actually, Deputy Chief, can you please come and, and communicate with Valerie and, and make sure that you get referrals? But anybody that's interested in this issue, clearly, right now, what's going on is the day center is on the verge of opening. That's what's going to be really connecting up these important services. So thank you very much, Valerie. That's, that's what we're doing. All right. David Long, and then Walter Brooks.
Hi, I'm David Long, and I'm here on behalf of Camp Kilworth. I'm part of Troop 398 in Dash Point, Washington, and also I'm part of Lakota Middle School's 7th grade IESA program, which could very well much use the property. Well, anyways, well, the Pacific Carbs Council has been planning the log camp Kilworth, which in 2012 and 2013, they were closing it because they needed to survey on, on landsliding, which I get, but now they're cutting down trees in the landsliding area, which would make the hill more collapsible. And why are they putting heavy machinery on the hill to make it more weaker? And I, I just like feel like they're trying to close down the camp, because they just want profit off of it. And I feel like in the upper part, in upper, like, area of the camp, there is a dog hair stand where last time they logged it, the trees didn't come back that well. So there's these, all these, just not, they're very healthy, very healthy trees up there, because last time they logged it, they didn't, like, replant it, they didn't do anything, which you're supposed to. So I feel like they should have arborists come out and look at the property, and look at how close its vicinity to the ocean and Puget Sound, and how we can do to help save Camp Kilworth and the property.
Thank you, David. Great job. All right, Walter Brooks, and then Tony Fint, and then Richard Gilbert. And that'll be the last pink sheet I have.
My name is Dr. Walter Brooks, and most everybody in this room sent me to graduate school. It didn't cost me a cent, and I worked really hard to get through. So I wrote up, wrote this up from that perspective, that there is a solution here, okay? That is to build a university site on this site. It would gradually be developed. It could be done in a ecologically sound manner. Yes, you would probably have to find some way to buy the property back from the current owner, because you can't do this without having all of it. And I don't know how you're going to do that, because our current governor, who I'm supposed to support, probably can't find the money to do the right thing either. So this is not just a local problem. This should never have occurred. That building, I used to work at Warehouser. I've been in that building. It's been a long time since I've been in that building. But when I was there, I stood in awe of it, okay? So I don't know what to say. I had a much longer speech and a different speech. I'll, but leave it here for you to look, some of you to look at. It's a lot more carefully thought out. But fundamentally, all of what's happening is just plain wrong.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks. Tony Fint, and then Richard Gilbert.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and all involved in this momentous decision. I'm Tony Fint, a resident of Federal Way and Northlake. By going forward, as you seem to be intending to do, there are expenses not yet addressed. We have been informed that we, the residents and taxpayers of Federal Way, will be on the hook for all the road and infrastructure improvements that will be inevitably needed and required. We are expected to accommodate this business of IRG in Orca Bay. By using the 1994 agreement and the Phase 3 permitting process, we are on the hook, all of us. As Ron Becherdite spoke to, usually, a developer or a business joining and impacting our community would be required to widen roads, install traffic signs and signals, add proper sidewalks, et cetera, but not these developers. It just might be cheaper to get sued by IRG. It's possibly, it possibly, you all seem to have been legally advised about basically being gagged in public comment, fearing you are overstepping your bounds. Are you aware of that? Did you know that these costs fall on you? Recently, on the news, Snohomish County was sued by, for issuing permits for allowing and the filling of wetlands for a proposed pain field development. These were required, they were required to repair those damaged wetlands as well as the suing that went on. Will we be sued twice for wetland filling and IRG? It took Christian Face Center four to five years for them to proceed with that development, at great cost to them. All the required permits, studies, and God knows what. From what I understand, that land back then was already zoned industrial. By processing this treasured property as Phase 3, you are essentially handing over this property and our coveted tax dollars inappropriately. Take the time to make a better choice for our city and invoke a moratorium. Please take a pause breath. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remind you of one thing. Three months ago, I sat in your office. You closed the door. We had a private conversation about this whole thing. And if you don't remember it, I do. Not once I went around that table twice. I mean, in the sense, we kept going around about it, and you avoided it. You lied to me, sir. You knew about this. You knew about it then. You said absolutely nothing.
All right. Richard Gilbert.
Well, on that, my, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council and, and neighbors, thank you. My name's Richard Gilbert. I'm not a resident of North Shore. I'm a resident of Stone Brook subdivision out on the west edge of Federal Way. I'm going to, once again, kind of abandon my remarks and limit it to say that although I live out there, I am fully in support of a moratorium on development on the Warehouser campus, the former Warehouser campus, for the reasons that others have expressed here tonight. The other thing that I would say about this, between the, the study session and council meetings, this is the third meeting I've attended about this, we're not going away.
All right, that's the last pink sheet I have. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? All right, we'll step right on up, and we'll make sure we, pick up a pink sheet on your way, and we'll make sure we get one.
I actually filled one out, but I was caught by the sound of the train, so I was one minute late.
Oh, oh, okay.
I commute from Seattle every day.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. And then, and then if you just want to, like, fill one out and then bring it with you to the podium, and when you get all done, make sure that you give it to our city clerk. So we've got Lori Brown. Lori?
Good evening. My name is Lori Brown. I'm a brand-new resident to Federal Way and to Northlake. I moved in with my fiancee two months ago. We bought a lovely new home at a very high price, not knowing this was going on, because we had read, did all my research and read the newspapers and read the comments that the mayor was making and IRG was making, and thought, these are caring, responsible people who are being transparent and communicating with the public. It's safe to sign those purchase and sale agreements, and it's safe to hand over $675,000. And within a couple of weeks, I saw the signs go up, and I was, I was approached with my fiancee by the neighbors. I'm not stupid. I'm the Deputy Director of Transportation for King County. I've done that job for 12 years. I've been a top advisor to the mayor of Seattle. I've been the operations director at the Seattle Public Library System in the middle of their building program where we redid 20 branch libraries in the downtown library. I know how to do research. I know what the public process is. I know what the political process is. I know a public relations disaster when I see one. I can't add anything to the facts and the information that everyone's provided. You've heard it all. You, I know that you've spent many hours considering this, studying it, searching your souls about it, feeling sick over, over it. I'm truly sorry. I know what it's like to be in, in the public service. I know it's not an easy job. You're probably all wishing right about now that you don't have these jobs. Maybe you don't care if you're reelected. It might be a blessing in disguise. I would just ask, and, and I would lend my voice to my new neighbors and my new community, really search your soul. Think about what you're about to do and what you may not be about to do. Don't go home tonight wishing that you had done something different. Don't go home tonight feeling that you had let the community down. The community is the city. If you let the community down, you let the city down. Your job, as you know, is to, is to take care of everyone in the community and to protect the city's resources. As people have mentioned, there's going to be a lawsuit unless there's a better way found. So I offer my help however I can. I appreciate those of you that have communicated with me. I know this is a tough decision. I'm sorry IRG was not able to deliver on their promises to you and to the community. That's a very difficult thing to swallow. I get that. Thank you very much.
Go ahead and speak first, and then we'll get your, but just tell us who you are, please.
My name is Jessica Lacy, and I'm actually speaking on behalf of kind of three generations. My grandmother, Mary Davies, owned a home on, in the Northlake area for over 40 years. My sister, who left earlier, she was sitting with the baby over in the far side, which actually, I guess, means four generations. She purchased that home from my grandmother. And so we have had my grandmother, her children, me and my sister, and now a new generation of kids that have been living in that area, growing up, walking in that area. I've been walking dogs around the Warehouser area for basically my entire life. And I don't have much to add detail or policy-wise versus what else, what has already been brought up, but this is impacting people who have never really been active before. I'm the one in my family that pays attention to politics, too much to national, not enough to local. And it was my sister who pays very little attention to any of it that brought this up to me, because she saw the signs in her neighborhood, and she said, what is this? What is going on? People who don't generally, I don't want to say don't care, but people who aren't generally very proactive about how they feel about what's happening in their neighborhoods are feeling that now. This is touching a lot of nerves. I want to say both positively and negatively, but positively, I'm not certain who is enthused about it aside from IRG and future tax revenue. I don't know. I don't know. So, I hope that you very much consider the moratorium that people are asking for. I hope you consider taking the time to think about what, what these people are saying because for every person that has spoken here, there's 10 more that didn't speak and there's 100 more who haven't fully realized what's, what's at stake yet. And by the time they figure it out, it might be too late. So, you have to listen to us and give us the voices of, of all of those that still haven't, that still haven't spoke. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Good job. All right. And your name, please?
Hi, my name's Kathleen Russell. I happen to be Jessica's aunt. So, born and raised here, spent my whole life, used to ride my horse on Warehouser property when I was a little girl. The only thing that I want to contribute to this, and I am not a fish processing plant professional, but I would suffice to say that probably nobody in this room has ever been downwind of a fish processing plant. But I spent some time, I lived for a decade on a sailboat and I was an American Semola downwind of tuna factories. The stench is not there all the time, but when it is there, we had done a six-day passage of being four hours on, four hours off of watches. When we get finished with a passage like that, we're absolutely exhausted. I was woken up when they vented the tuna plant, absolutely sat up. The stench was so overwhelming, it was just hard to believe. I don't know if this plant is going to be that bad, but there will be scent and it's not going to be fun. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I can say, I'll save you some steps. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Johnson and I'm opposed to the Orca Bay plant. Primarily, other, looking online, other plants have bragged about having tertiary treatment for wastewater after the processing of their fish. I don't see anything mentioned for Orca Bay as to processing that wastewater. If they are going to do it, where are they going to site that facility and how are they going to control the smell off of that? If they're not going to do any tertiary processing of their wastewater, then are they dumping it into our sewers? If they are, have, has Federal Way and the, and the downstream communities done any studies about the organic load going now into our filters? How much can our bacterias eat of all that seafood coming down line, the micro bits? If that means that we have to expand the plants, who's going to pay for that? Usually that's kind of pushed off to the local communities, higher taxes, larger facilities. So, I hope that's being considered. I'd love to see a moratorium where more information is gathered about the impact of the plant as a whole. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
My name is Dakota Rousher. And I live, and I live in, in 5,010, I live in, I live in Federal Way.
How do you feel about them, with the fish plant?
That building a fish plant is a bad idea. And about the lyrics, unless someone like us cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not.
This is my son. This is my son Dakota Rousher. He's a 20-year-old adult with autism. I am his mom and his brother Damon also has autism. We moved into this area specifically because I felt it was a safe environment for my sons as we are our own group home. I am devastated that we will never be able to sell our home and maybe move back to an area that would be better for us if you build this plant. I'm only in this home because of a special grant I, I received to help me buy a home for me and my sons. And now I've learned of this. I only saw the news, I'm very tired, and I only saw the news the day of, the last day to write a letter, by accident I saw it. And now, I'm just devastated that this is going to come in. It's going to ruin our, our area. It's going to ruin our property value and it's, it's going to make our area unlivable. And it's a beautiful place and I'm begging, please don't destroy it.
That was the last question.
It's important to my family and all of these families around us.
All right, thank you. All right, and when you're done with the pink sheet, just go ahead and give it to Stephanie. And Dakota, you did a great job. Good job, Dakota.
I'm Simone Perry. I wasn't going to talk tonight, but changed my mind. Everywhere I go since this started, whether it's in Seattle or Tacoma or any of the other areas, people say to me, keep up the fight because this property means so much to people and it's not just for Federal Way. It's all over. And I remind people that even if they don't live in Federal Way, they should let it be known that they do care. And I agree with what you said about Camp Killworth because I am also a Girl Scout leader in Federal Way, but I'm surprised to hear you call it a treasure when this is just as much of a treasure and it really, really needs to be protected. My question is, if this fish processing plant was going in at the entrance to your neighborhood, would you be fighting as hard as we are to have it stopped? If that's the case, all this information that is brought forth tonight and previous nights is a matter of public record. It's by doing a records request. So, I'm kind of baffled as to why you request the information from these people when you should already have this information. Why isn't somebody doing a records request for all of you to get you this information? Why aren't you studying all of this history and everything else just as much as we are about this and so that you can make an informed decision? Because this is such, such a historical landmark and the decision that you're going to make on this is, is going to be such an impact on this community. And if there's too much information to be, in the amount of time we have, please set a moratorium so that we can all take a step back and make sure that this is done right. Thank you.
Thank you, Simone. And Simone, when you get a chance, can you make sure that our clerk gets the pink sheet? All right, sir?
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council members, John Lindonhour, actually a resident of Auburn, but my family's been in the area since the early 80s. I just have one question. If they do not think, the property owners do not think that there are sensitive wetlands on the Warehouser property, then why do they continue to pump water out of the retention ponds? Okay? They, they were doing it this week, so that's all I have to say.
John, great question. Was your, was your dad named John Lindonhour too?
Yes, he was. You know my dad.
Yeah, exactly. I, I thought so. A great guy.
Thank you.
We actually have an answer for that and thank you very much for your comment. Brian Wilson, our Chief of Staff?
So, in regards to the water pumping, there, there's been storm retention ponds and, and surface water retention facilities that have been on the Warehouser property for years. When IRG took possession of the property, they identified that many of these need to be maintained. So, that effort is underway to restore those surface water retention facilities on the property and as a part of that, there is some pumping of water from those facilities.
All right. Okay, was there anybody else who'd like to? Yeah, John, what I would suggest is maybe, I think there's a little bit of a deeper dive. Maybe when the, if you have an opportunity, either send Brian Wilson or myself an email, we'll give you a little bit more information. In fact, actually right behind you is, is Tom Messmer. He actually provided us with an information, with a response to that. He could provide you at least an information about what, what's happening there. All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Terry? You want to come on up, please?
I, I just wanted to know if you could say anything about your five candidates, where you are in that process?
Actually, one second. No, it's actually, no, actually, hold on for a second. I just turned up my microphone and, sorry. All right, so I have made, the way this works, and actually at the last council meeting, remember we talked a little bit about the process, not only for Community Development Director, but City Attorney and any department director. So, we had a great process. It was great to see you and your wife there and actually many people in the community. I think Richard Pearson was there, a number of folks were there where we had the reception for the candidates. We had five candidates. I have made, now, once I make this, I'll tell you in just a second, but once I make the selection, which I have and we've received an accepted offer, then it's up to the council to review the qualifications of that individual and then confirm, almost like at a senate level, you know, at the, at the national level, how cabinet secretaries are confirmed. Here, same thing. Directors are confirmed, a certain set of predetermined directors are confirmed by the council. The Community Development, the Community Development Department Director position is one of those departments. I made the decision to select Brian Davis from Roseburg, Oregon, and his potential start date would be November 1st, but this would be subject to council confirmation. That is not on the agenda for tonight. At some point, the council will need to deliberate and think about this and then it'll be put on an agenda for consideration by the council to confirm or deny that appointment.
So, has he started getting involved in, in reviewing some of this material already then?
Well, we just accept, I extended the offer earlier this week and it's, it's a little premature to, until we get, you know, it's a little premature, but once we start getting down that process, yes, well, we'll, he'll do the deep dive and, and get up to speed rather quickly. And thank you so much for your, actually, your background was very helpful and your recommendations were very helpful, Terry. Thank you. All right, anybody else? Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? All right, you guys, I, I just want to say, one of the things I say all the time is, we work for you. And, and I think everybody up here on the dais, we do. Now, you may be frustrated, but just, hold on. You may be frustrated about where we find ourselves right now, but that doesn't change the fact that everybody up on this dais and myself work for you. And government is about process and it's about fairness and we're going to be fair to everybody involved. We've listened to everybody. We are going to follow the letter of the law and do what we believe is the right thing to do and we're going to make sure that every consideration is taken into consideration. And so, I can tell you that, you know, every email that we receive, the council has reviewed it, I've reviewed it, staff makes sure the people, the, the individual, the, the acting Community Development Director, Scott Sproul, has, have received your emails. And we take this very, very seriously and every comment, every consideration, every concern has been taken into consideration and we will, will view it. But there is process because that's what government, government is of, by and for the people, but we cannot and will not react in panic and in, from emotion. We have to follow the law and we're going to. So, we appreciate your comments, we take it to heart and we're going to do what we need to do under the letter of the law. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, so now it's time for the consent agenda. These items have previously been through committee and there are letters A through G. And these, again, have been through council committee and they can be passed by one motion.
A through Q.
A through Q, excuse me. Oh, that's right. All right, so, letter A, the minutes. September 1st, 2016, study session minutes. September 16th, September 6th, 2016, special and regular meeting minutes. Item B, 2016 and 17, Diversity Commission Work Plan. Item C, First Amendment to Cedar Building Services Incorporated. Item D, Interagency Agreement Between Washington State ICAC Task Force Acting Through the City of Seattle Police Department and Federal Way Police Department. Item E, Drug Enforcement Administration Asset Forfeiture Sharing MOU and Local HIDTA Task Force Agreement. Item F, 2016 Target Community Engagement Funds Grant. Item G, Parks Asphalt Trail Repairs. Item H, Eastern States Paving Incorporated Retainage Release. Item I, Field Turf USA Incorporated Retainage Release. Item J, Landscape Structures Incorporated Retainage Release. Item K, Northwest Playground Equipment Incorporated Retainage Release. Item L, Metro Group LLC Retainage Release. Item M, American Guaranteed Roofing and Construction Incorporated Retainage Release. Item N, Global Contractors LLC Retainage Release. Item O, Steel Lake Park to Downtown Trail 30% Design Status Report. Item P, South 356 Street, Pacific Highway South to Enchanted Parkway Improvement Project, 100% Design Status Report and Authorization to Bid. Item Q, Piedmont Rock Bar Way, South, 20th Avenue South and formerly 20th Avenue and South 316th Street Sidewalk Replacement Project, project acceptance. Council, out of items A through Q, are there any items that council would want for separate consideration? Councilmember Honda?
I would just like to mention another one. I don't need to pull it. I'd just like to talk about it.
Okay. And actually, why don't we do that while we wait for a council member? We'll allow you to, I will entertain your, your request while we're, oh, there's Councilmember Duclair. Councilmember Honda?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to talk about the Diversity Commission Work Plan. As past Chair of the Diversity Commission, I've reviewed this work plan and I think that it's a very concrete and doable work plan. Not all work plans in the past, for, some commissions have been workable and not all work has been done and this work plan shows a commitment and a dedication of those commissioners to our community and so I appreciate the work that they put into this and the thought that they put into it.
All right, thank you very much. Council, any other items that, on the consent agenda? Councilmember Duclair, I, I read all the items from the consent agenda. Okay. And we have not yet voted. All right. All right, hearing non-emotion, Deputy Mayor Birbert, do you have a motion?
I do, thank you. I move approval of items A through Q on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve items A through Q. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the matter's passed unanimously. All right, now moving on to council business. Council, everyone on the dais should have received the 2008, 2017 and 18 biennial budget to council. This is the proposed budget at this stage. I want to, the way the process works for the folks here and watching in the audience, the way the, oh, and actually, Thomas, do you have a?
Do you want to bring it up now?
Yeah, go ahead and pull it up, please. So, the way the process works, everybody, is I actually, the, the mayor's job is to make sure, my, my staff and I and the department directors have been working on a proposed budget. So, what I'm going to do right now, we're not going to do a deep dive in regard to the budget. What, I'm going to talk about what that process is. This is a beginning point. This is a proposed budget. I'm going to talk about what some of those parameters are and I've got a brief PowerPoint presentation to do that. But what we are going to do and what I'll talk about later on in the presentation in just a few moments, is the department, the department by department briefings in which we're going to get into the line items and the, the actual individual programs. So, again, it's a, it's a big document, it's a proposed budget and we're going to, it'll give council an opportunity to start looking into these issues and we'll have a final approval as we get closer to the end of the year. All right, so, I've got my clicker here. Again, this is the 2017, 2018 biennial budget and this is just simply the presentation to council, but again, not in any kind of great detail. The first is I want to talk about the budget highlights. These are really the priorities. What we're required, council passed a resolution to make sure that we had a certain amount of strategic reserves on hand. 17% is really the GFAO, GFAO standard, of which we actually have a national officer of the GFAO in our finance director. 17% roughly with, you know, obviously in regard to our on-hand cash reserves or on-hand cash for the city. cash for the city, roughly translates to about nine million. We have actually used a more stringent, instead of hooking up the budget to a percentage, we've gone with the more stringent or conservative model of establishing nine million dollars on hand for council, excuse me, nine million dollars cash reserve on hand. And that's something that absolutely is a starting point for our city budget. We've accomplished that in this proposed budget. City services, you know, I think it's, obviously, we start with, we want to make sure that at a minimum, that we maintain our city services, and that really, you know, 75% of a city budget, or any organizations, but it's usually about manpower, about personnel cost. And so, we want to make sure that there were no layoffs contained in this budget. So, council reserve, not laying off staff, keeping city services at a minimum maintained. Public safety, 131 commissioned officers. Just a few short years ago, we were down to about, in the low 120s, 121, 122. Several years during the time that I was deputy mayor, we increased that, two officers, then another two, we got that up to 126. What we have done previously now is got our authorized commissioned officers up to a number of 131, but we were still sitting in regard to actual officers at 126. The goal of what we've been doing is getting our personnel through the academy to where we can be fully staffed, and that is the budget that we have in regard to making sure. We also have a commitment to make sure that we get to the 131 number by the end of this year before the new biennium starts. So, the commitment remains ongoing to get to the 131. It's difficult with attrition, retirements, medical leave, where you get that, that number of officers below that 131. So, we're engaging in practices about lateral hires from other departments, and making sure that we get a fully-staffed police department with the 131. Under the Prop 1, which was passed, I believe, back in 2006, the, I think the high watermark was about 136 officers. So, aspirationally, we want to get more officers on the street. But we also have competing concerns in regard to increased SCORE cost. SCORE is a regional facility. It's the regional jail facility that is housed in the city of Des Moines. Misdemeanors from the cities of Tukwila, Federal Way, Auburn, Burien, Kent, Des Moines, not, excuse me, not Kent, but Des Moines, and several other cities, Sea Tac, actually have housed their misdemeanors in the SCORE facility. And obviously, felonies get into the King County system. There have been increases in regard to, the SCORE is actually managing itself well, but just by nature of our average daily population, there have been increases in cost, and we'll go into that deeper dive in regard to the individual departments. Valley Communications, 911, which is, I'm actually, for the next two years, this year and next year, I'm the chair of the Valley Communications Board with those members. There have been also increased costs with ValleyCom. So, this budget includes those costs, and making sure still that we have that commitment to our uniformed officers, and making sure we increase those numbers. I should say also, as well, that it was, this was brought up actually several months ago, that over the past three years, we have actually increased spending on public safety in our police department by 3.6 million dollars. And that's, that's an investment in really the number-one priority of this community and any community, which is to keep our community safe. All right, so, again, budget highlights. Human services funding for 2017, it'll be $813,000. And again, when we get into that budget presentation, which we'll talk about when those dates are, we'll get into the exact line-by-line items. 2018 will be slightly higher, 1800, 1808, 18,000. Day Center, we were talking about, when Valerie, our previous speaker, was speaking about the homeless issue, one of the things that the council has really done is really stepped up and dedicated $50,000 per year, so a total of $100,000 per biennium, to make sure that we've got an operating day center for those folks out in the community that are either, you know, living out in a tent, they're homeless, or maybe they're on the verge of homelessness, to really give them, you know, the ability to clean their clothes, to, you know, do some laundry, to help with a job, get, you know, and really climb out of that desperate situation of homelessness, that awful cycle. And so, we really think that that day center is going to really help people segue and transition. And in my conversations, when I was at the governor's office earlier this year, and in speaking to both our United States senators, I highlight this, because I think it's really a model with what should be happening in regard to really arresting that downward cycle and getting people back into a system of self-sufficiency, and working in partnership with our partners like the Multi-Service Center and other folks like that. Health insurance, we have a 5% premium increase that obviously, for our personnel, needs to be addressed and has been addressed, keeping in mind these other issues. All right. I'm sorry?
Where is the day center?
Oh, it'll be on 13th Avenue, right over there, off 336th. So, yeah, right next to the Multi-Service Center, and that food bank, and the public health, the King County Public Health Facility. I also want to just commend our council once again. In 2014, we were faced with the shutting down, and the absolute loss of the King County Public Health Facility here in the city of Federal Way that serves nearly 14,000 low-income residents. I mean, that's the size of a small city. And this council stepped up unanimously and funded that $250,000 in 2014 to keep the doors open, and now, King County has really stepped up, and that service is not going away anytime soon. But that took a real coordinated effort. We had a room, yeah, it was, it was a great development. Phase 5, we heard about that today, Pacific Highway South, construction to occur in 2017 and 18. And let me just say that phase 1 through 4 was an investment in this community on Pacific Highway that gets to about $80 million over the course of the past 10 years. And you can really tell, if you look at the before-and-after pictures of this, of our community in regard to what Pacific Highway used to look like and what it looks like now, it's night and day. And it's really has been a true transformation. We're going to talk about the overlay program here in a minute, which is really the envy of our neighbors. The Performing Arts and Events Center, that will be one of the separate items. We'll have Teresa Yvonne. We're going to have each one of our department directors talk about their individual departments during the deeper dive. But the Performing Arts and Events Center will open next summer, and there's obviously the budgeting that has to go with that. We, out of the $32.5 million that, in regard to just the, there's really two parts of that. There's the core cost of the facility to build the shell and the interior, and then there's the operational facility. Teresa's going to really talk about the operation of the facility. But in regard to building that facility, we have raised, from all sorts of sources, 2/3 of that $30 million, 32 million, we have raised just about $21 million out of 32. And now, we're working to close that gap of that, of that money raised, and that's going to come through, really, actually, $1 million, actually, just about $60,000 or $70,000 shy, $70,000 shy of a million dollars has been raised by the public. And we just actually got another $25,000 we heard about last week from fundraising sources. So, tremendous work has been done on that. But the second piece of that, after we get that done, is the operation part of that. I would also say that we're working on naming rights for that facility to bridge that gap. Okay, moving on. Budget highlights. We have logic tax funding in 2017 of $225,000, and in 2018, again, the same thing of $225,000. And that's really to get heads in beds, get people to come to our community and invest in our community, and that includes a lot of different things that you see there. When, when special events occur at the King County Aquatic Center, or we've got regional events, our hotels fill up, and we can utilize that money, again, to support major events in our community that really gets the name out about our community. Economic development, a really exciting development in regard to, we're going to be hosting the 2000, hosting a portion, not in part. There'll be, the Special Olympics in 2018 will be housed mainly at the University of Washington in Seattle, but we've been meeting with the North American folks for the Special Olympics, and they'll be doing key events down here in Federal Way. And that's, that's great. They'll be using our softball field, they'll be using our Performing Arts and Events Center for different types of things, but that's going to be really a great thing and for our community. And really, in regard to economic investment, it'll mean a lot of investment in our community. The Aquatic Center National Events, that we had the diving trials, remember, in the lead-up to the 2012 London Olympics, we had the diving trials here, those kinds of events we are attempting to attract here again. Celebration Park Athletic Tournaments that are ongoing. Downtown Investment and Redevelopment, you know, we had just recently the park open, and it looks beautiful. Obviously, we have the Performing Arts and Events Center, but we are also working on the development and working with cadius partners out of Montana to buy a portion of that, and we're in the middle of negotiations right now for a hotel immediately adjacent to the Performing Arts and Events Center. So, that's in negotiations. We've got light rail, which is on the ballot, which we can't get into, but light rail, if the ballot initiative passes this year, will be coming down through Federal Way, and we're working on, on that, which would essentially swing through our downtown. We actually had an historic alignment between all of the south sound cities, you know, from Burien, Sea Tac, Des Moines, Kent, and Federal Way, really insisting that the light rail come down the freeway, as opposed to tearing up that, and remember, I was talking about just a few moments ago, about the 80, that 80 to $100 million investment that's occurred along Pac Highway, through Pac Highway and our roads, and infrastructure. If light rail had gone down the middle of Pac Highway, which they were, which was one of the preeminent models, it would have dug all of that up, and all of that money would have been wasted, and it would have really split our city in half. So, those cities all came together and were aligned to get a light rail to swing through in the core of our downtown. That was a major effort on behalf of council and myself. Okay, budget calendar. Again, so, this is really the first salvo, or the first presentation of the budget. It's going to take council a little while to go through it. They've got the budget book. The most important thing is to get this started and get in front of them. September 28th, 2016, I believe, is that next Wednesday, is our first presentation. We'll have the deeper dive, department presentations. We'll have the police department, Chief Andy Wong. Human resources, Gene Stanley will talk. City Clerk's office, we'll have our own city clerk, Stephanie Courtney, give a presentation. And the mayor's office, I'll have my chief of staff and myself. We'll talk about our budget, and that's next Wednesday here at City Hall in the evening. At what time are those meetings? 5:30 PM in these, in this room. So, if you want to get into some of these, some of the detail on that, please come here at 5:30 City Hall. Okay, the next day, on Thursday, September 29th, 2016, just next Thursday, the department presentations will be Public Works Department, Economic Development Department, Parks Department, City Attorney's Office, and Municipal Court. October 4th, what day of the week is that? Tuesday, October 4th. Actually, that's our first meeting of the month in October, department presentations. We'll have the Performing Arts and Events Center talk about their budget, city council, program requests, and council deliberations. Council will have an opportunity to really start talking about, and really start taking a look at this, the proposals contained in my budget, and maybe they want to move some things around and consider their objectives. October 18th, two weeks later, at the next city council meeting, is a public hearing about the budget. November 1st, we'll continue council deliberations if needed. Public hearing continues, introduction of ordinances, the budget ordinances. And then, November 15th, we have enactment of ordinances and enactment of fee resolution. So, we've got not only the operating budget, but the capital budget. That's why it's, ordinances is in the plural. And then, January to February of 2017, final budget publication and monitoring of budgets. All right. Council, do you have any questions? Okay, the budget document, Brian, and actually, will the, will my, will the proposed budget be online for people to be able to view, or if they want to get a copy of the proposed budget, how would they get it?
We will have it online before the end of the week.
Very good. Thank you, Ade. And I actually, I'd like to say, Ade, thank you so much to you and your staff. A tremendous amount of work has gone into this. We are so lucky to have Ade at this position as our, heading our finance department. They've been working very hard on this. This is just the beginning of this process, but it's a good start. And obviously, what I want to do is really kind of sort of tee up the, sort of the background and the parameters with which we're operating. Okay, and no action is requested on this. It was just a presentation. So, now, moving on to item B, youth commission appointments. Councilmember Copeng, would you like to just briefly address this agenda item?
Yes, I would. I would like to move that the following appointments to the youth commission with terms expiring August 31st, 2018. We have Reese Binder, Von Born, Gillian Su, Henry O'Hara, Hannah Kim, Malad Hidari, Brittany Rogers.
Can I, can I, real quick, did we not, did we not get to the interviews today?
We did not, but we chose to appoint them.
We, we looked at all, we had their bios and stuff, and they looked, all looked terrific.
Okay.
Additionally, additionally, if I may, we invited them to come for a short session prior to the meeting when their certificates are presented to them, so that we can have a conversation with them, which we were not able to have this evening.
Very good. Councilmember Copeng, can you finish your motion, and, or were you done?
I have completed the reading of the names, yes.
Okay, there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you. Yes, I did also have an opportunity to talk with them as a group, and had read their, their resumes and so forth, and their applications. So, I feel comfortable with this, with this process that we've developed, and I'm looking forward to meeting with them before the next meeting as well.
Very good. Council, any other, any other discussions? All right, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. And I'm sorry I interrupted you, Councilmember Copeng.
Well, no, I, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't me, or the deputy.
Okay, all right. Item C, demolition of structures at 36818, 8th Avenue South, authorization to bid. First, we're going to get a staff report from Teresa Thurlow, Surface Water Manager, and then we're going to kick it over to our, well, let's get that first, and then we'll, we'll have our chair of our land use committee address this. Teresa?
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, council members. I'm Teresa Thurlow with the Surface Water Management Division, and I'm here tonight to talk to the demolition of structures at 36818, 8th Avenue South, authorization to bid. The policy question is, should council, should city council authorize staff to bid the demolition of structures at 36818, 8th Avenue South, and return to LUTC and council to award the project to the lowest responsive responsible bidder? A little history on this. Under our acquisition plan for conservation properties, we acquired the Larson Justice property. This is Pac Highway right here, I-5 over here, and the Montessori schools in here. So, that kind of gives you the area that we're looking at, the West Hailibos. Reminder of what our acquisition plan is, and this was the approved property here. We acquired the property, it's a two-acre property commonly referred to as the Larson Justice property, in December of 2015. We did use the SWIM capital funds for open space conservation on this purchase, and it's located in Spring Valley, as I just mentioned, within the north fork of the West Hailibos Creek. The intended use of this is to use it as conservation open space and future trailhead for our trail system plan in the Spring Valley, similar to the West Hailibos West Wetlands Park. The property has six structures in various stages of decay, including the single-family farmhouse, two sheds, a cistern, a barn, and a pump house, but no partridges in the pear tree. The site also has underground storage tanks, and this is a map of the site. This is the main house area, and then a few of the, what I call the outbuildings. This is the wetland area here, and this is the creek that runs through the property. The effort since acquisition was, as I mentioned, it's part of our open space acquisition plan for conservation restoration and ecological improvement in our area. And we had an environmental assessment done, and then we pursued authorization to demolish the structures at the June 6th LUTC meeting. At that time, the LUTC decision was to delay demolition and gather more information in regards to the historic value and preservation of the structures on the site. We reached out to King County Preservation Program for an assessment of the house and buildings, and they reported back to us that the- back to us that the outbuildings are unlikely to be salvageable. And then they, their report included three future, three future use options for consideration in the city. One of them is to restore the house as museum or interpretive facility for the Historical Society of Federal Way. Two was to adaptively reuse the house as a facility associated with the West Hailibos Watershed Trail Project. And then he went on to give us a few ideas for that. And then the third one is, and this is a quote from the report, "Demolition of the house is currently the most likely scenario because the rarity of this historic resource. It would be wise for the city to explore options on how to mitigate for the loss. The Washington Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation are available to offer suggestions for the best avenues for mitigation." And at the very minimum, he recommended that we prepare an national registration nomination for the house and documentation, and to look at interpretive signage on site. And the, we analyzed the options and determined that option one and option two, while a historical of Federal Way has expressed their interest in restoring and preserving this house and the outbuildings, they do not currently have the capacity nor the funding to proceed with this option. To leave the house and outbuilding sitting during an indeterminate amount of time will result in increased risk of vandalism, occupation by trespassers, and further degradation of the structures. The house is also in a remote location, although easily accessed from a private road by a transient population. If restored as a museum or interpretive facility, the, there would need to be an identified volunteer workforce or part-time FTE that could be dedicated to that site during open hours of the museum, if it were, that were chosen. Option three, we actually concurred with this recommendation to demolish and also to do the proper documentation for the historic value of the property. I did include this time a few pictures of the, what's happening at the site. Just to give you an idea, this is the cistern building in February of last year, and as you can see, the top half of that building is now down here in the field below. So the structures, the outbuildings are definitely in a, in a state of disrepair. Also, again, winter of last year, and then, as you can see, the barn is pretty close to demolishing itself. The, at the September 12th, L U T C, we did pursue demolition plan for that, and at that time, the committee voted two to one to forward option one, which was demolition of the structures at 36818, 8th Avenue South, with the exception of the house demolition, to the September 20th, today, business account, Business Council Agenda for approval. SWIM staff was also asked to find out what the cost impact would be if the demolition was divided into two projects. Basically, demolish the structures of the outbuildings at this time, but leave the house for further investigation. Our demolition, if we were to do one project for demolishing of everything there, is $86,000, and this does include a $15,000 line item for the historic mitigation that was requested under the report. And we do have this budgeted for this year under our CIP Project Four. If we did it into two separate projects, demolition and abatement of the outbuildings first, and then demolition of and abatement of the house, if we were to do that at a future time, because it was determined that we couldn't have that full restoration or preservation, the price does go up about $98,000. So it's about a $12,000 difference in the expenses. Options considered, authorize staff to bid the demolition of structures at 36818, 8th Avenue South, and return to L U T C and council for award of the project to the lowest responsive responsible bidder. Do not authorize staff to bid the demolition of structures at 36818, 8th Avenue South, and provide direction to staff. And then, from the L U T C of 12 September, authorize staff to bid the demolition of structures at 36818, 8th Avenue South, with the exception of the house demolition, and return to L U T C and council for award of the project to the lowest responsive responsible bidder. And the Mayor's recommendation is to approve option one, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you. Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate the overview. It was really detailed and perfect, considering the in-depth conversation we had at the land use meeting. I will take full blame, credit, whatever you want to call it, for that extensive conversation that we had. The dialogue was really beneficial, I think. You know, I think where I was coming from, it was historic preservation and acknowledging and respecting the fact that we had a building in the city that had that, has that historic significance. Since that conversation and the recommendation to change the trajectory of the, whatever you call the, the recommendation to the council, we moved that, just as a little bit further detail, we moved that off the consent agenda onto Business Council so that we could have this discussion. But since that time, I've had the benefit of other conversations and more research, and have become a little more enlightened. And not that the staff didn't do that to begin with, because they, you always do a fantastic job. But I, my concern was really the historic preservation of the house, of the residence. It was the one structure on the land that really has some sort of viability still, although it does have its, it comes with its complications. So at this point, I am willing to, you know, basically go back to the, to number, recommendation number one, the Mayor's recommendation, and recommend that we do demolish all of the buildings on that site for, you know, many reasons I won't go into. But I do want to appreciate, I do want to say I appreciate the other members on the Land Use Committee talking about that in such detail, and yourself, and Marwan as well. Those kind of conversations, I think, are very important and can get us to the points to where we need to get, even though this one didn't end up that way necessarily. But it's important. I just think that historic preservation is essential, because we don't have many buildings in, in the city that have historic significance. And when we get an opportunity to save one, we should try to do that. That said, this just leads to what a gentleman mentioned tonight in his comments, was about the historic preservation ordinance, which I know staff is looking at, and I feel strongly about as well. So, all that said.
I would be happy to second the motion.
I figured you would.
Yeah.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any, thank you, Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, I wanted to give full details on the background.
I just wanted to add that I appreciated that conversation, and obviously had a lot of questions myself. I think that's good dialogue for us to have. So I certainly wasn't critical of it all. I just had a different conclusion, and that's okay. So anyway, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's all good.
All right. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously.
I never read it. Do I have to read it? I just said it, didn't I? Okay.
I believe we haven't had an actual motion yet at this point, so I think we needed.
Yeah, I was just, she said number one.
Okay, actually, for purpose of the record.
Yeah, okay.
She just said number one.
Gotcha. Okay, so start over. Okay, so I move to authorize staff to bid the demolition of structures at 36818, 8th Avenue South, and proceed with the mitigation process for the loss of the house.
I will second it again.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now the matter passes unanimously. All right, council reports. Councilmember Stefan Austin.
Thank you, Mayor. The Mayor and a couple of the council members and I were, attended the 10th Anniversary Celebration at Family Life Christian Center. And they are so family and city-oriented. I was really, really pleasantly or pleased. And they pray for our city on a regular basis, so I just wanted to publicly thank them for that. And with that, the, we love our city. Volunteer Day is October 2nd, from 2:00 to 6:00 o'clock at the, Our Saviors Lutheran Church on 320th. And bring a group, come up by yourself. I think it's a great opportunity, not only to volunteer, but to meet other city people who love our city and who want to make a difference here. So. And then, Advancing Leadership, Advancing Leadership's Evening with the Stars is on October 8th at the Community Center from 5:30 to 9:00 o'clock. Again, if you can come support that, that'd be great. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you. I'm not going to talk about my, you know, what I've done in the past a couple of weeks tonight. What I'm going to talk about is the community outreach tonight that we heard, and we've heard for the last couple of weeks, about the IRG property. I want to, I want to thank everyone who came here again tonight to share your concerns about this, this subject and the potential impact it could have on you and your families and the community at large. The Mayor made a statement, he said, "We are going to," let me read it here, "We are going to do what we believe is the right thing to do." And that's a true statement. And the thing is that we all, you know, we are individuals. So we all have our own ideas of what the right thing to do may or may not be, and there are constraints that are difficult to overcome at times. But for me personally, I am, I guess distraught, I guess might be the word, that the residents feel as if the city has let them down and turned their backs on them. And to that, I just want you to know that we are listening. We do hear you. We have not turned our backs on you. We are doing what we can within the confines of where we stand at the moment. It is a public relations disaster at the moment, as another person mentioned. My background is in branding, PR, marketing, and that kind of stuff, and, and I see this for what it is, but it's not insurmountable. It's just, it's going to take time, and the right kind of, whatever happens, we can overcome it. It's just not going to be necessarily what everybody would want. There's not going to be consensus on this issue. Let's see. I do want to, just want to state for the, for the record, that someone mentioned putting a university there. That is something that we talked about years and years ago, and so who knows what could happen. I don't know that it's in the card, but we do, in the cards. But we do have a university initiative that we are working on, and that needs assessment, should be rolled out soon. Anyway, I just, I wanted to make sure everyone knows that, that in my mind, it's not ideal by any stretch of the imagination, but there is opportunity here, I guess, in some respects, to see if the city and IRG and you, the community, can try to work together and come together on solutions. And right now, I know that sounds hollow, but that's, that's where we are at this very moment. And so I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunter?
Thank you. I'd like to tell the North Lake residents a story about what I did in my past. Years ago, when the school district was moving kids around from, from schools to schools because of boundary changes, I was very involved in the PTA and in the school district on several of the school district committees. And I was on a boundary committee, which was a difficult thing to do because we weren't representing our school. We were representing the school district. And yet, we had our school families pushing at us not to, not to change the boundaries. But there is a boundary change that affected my family, and we were at Silver Lake Elementary. We'd been there for a few years. And the school district decided to move half of Silver Lake Elementary to Panther Lake Elementary. And the reason that they wanted to do that was Panther Lake Elementary had a lot of apartment buildings, and Silver Lake Elementary didn't have a single apartment building in our boundary. And we had a very active PTA. We had a very active volunteer force at the school, and Panther Lake at the time didn't have that. And as parents and citizens of the area, we got together, and for two years, we fought the school district. And they hadn't expected that. We attempted to hire an attorney to help us. We had to go to Spokane to hire someone, because the school district had retained all of the attorneys in the area that worked as school district law. And in the end, we lost. Half of Panther Lake came to Silver Lake, and half of Silver Lake went to Panther Lake. And that was difficult, but at least our kids got to stay at Silver Lake for a year longer than they would have. And that's how I got involved in what I do. And what I want to say to you is, I want you all to know that your message isn't falling on deaf ears. I'm reading your emails. I'm listening to you. And you are who our city is. Our citizens, our people, is what makes this city such a great city. I'm really proud of what you're doing, and I'm going to encourage you to keep doing it and not to stop. If we had stopped our fight to keep our kids at Silver Lake, they would have been moved within months. And what I learned from that is that you can make all of us uncomfortable. And I got, I was getting some messages from people that we looked really uncomfortable up here today. And we should, because you're putting us on the spot. You're asking us to make decisions that some people up here are not comfortable on making tonight. But what you're doing is, you're giving us information, and your information is very interesting, and I enjoy reading it, and I want you to keep sending it to me. What I would like to see is IRG, the City Council, and I underline that, because as a City Council, we don't always get all of the information that the Mayor's Office gets, and the interested citizens to sit down together and to be a team. This is our city. IRG is a property owner, so they're part of us now. And we need to learn how to work with them. This is an, an important issue, not just to the North Lake residents, but to our region. People are hearing about this from all areas in Washington, and they're talking about it, and they're watching us. And they want to know what we're going to do, because this could happen in their communities too. I do work for you. I do listen to you, and I respect you. Leadership is very important, and I take my responsibilities as a council member very seriously, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Susan. Councilmember Copeng?
Well, as the newest member of the council, I can say, I didn't know I was getting into this, but I'm glad to be here and to serve the community, and do look forward to finding a solution that works best for all of us. I think that, you know, what we've heard tonight is really about the passion that people have for not only their, their largest investment, but for the city as a whole. And I, I respect that, and as a member of the council, want to do what I can to make sure that we continue down a path that really continues to elevate our city and really creates the place that all of us want long term. And, you know, I think that that's going to come in a lot of different ways, but I think by having responsible policies on land use is one of the important ways that we can do that. But that being said, I did have the opportunity to be a part of the interview crew, or the interview group that interviewed the Community Development Director, and I think that we had some very good candidates, and all of them were very impressed with the city of Federal Way. Obviously, they're, they came from Florida, from Oregon, from Hunts Point, all over. And they were universally very interested in what we were doing here, and I think that there are a lot of things going right in Federal Way. And I don't, I think that in the present moment, there's a lot of concern about warehouse, rightfully so, the warehouse or property. But, or I should say, the former warehouse or property. But that being said, there are a lot of good things happening in the city, and we can create solutions that work. And I look forward to being a part of that as we continue down the path of rock. So that's all I've got to say.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to take the time to say thank you to you. I think it is my hope that you continue to fight for your passion and continue to be engaged, and that's what I've been saying to a lot of you. This past Saturday morning, I had the chance to tour, take a tour with Lori Seacrest, and we, I had the chance to walk around the warehouse. Seacrest, um, and we, I had the chance to walk around, um, uh, the warehouse or property, uh, and I see how beautiful it is, I see how close the houses are, uh, I, I hear a lot of the concerns. Uh, and, uh, I know that some of you guys have texted me and I've tried to get back to you guys, uh, and want to, and just want to say thank you for staying connected with us. Um, this is, this is a difficult situation to be in, uh, and I'm always a person, um, or I should say, um, the one thing I've learned in life so far, amongst many other things, is continuous improvements. And certainly when situations arise, there's always opportunities to, uh, improve. Uh, and that's what I'm, uh, that's what I'm looking forward to seeing, uh, from this situation. Um, and, um, there's a lot to say, um, uh, and it's frustrating. It's frustrating, um, because the thing I've learned is you have your good days, a, as a person that can advocate for people, and you have your bad days. Uh, and this is an issue that, uh, I, I completely hear you guys, uh, my heart goes out to you guys, um, and, uh, and there's, uh, concerns on both sides. Uh, and so, um, with that, um, you know, keep emailing me, keep, um, texting me, uh, call me, um, and I'm happy to meet with people. Uh, I know I've met, met with a few people already, uh, and so I'm happy to do that. Um, also, um, I wanted to, uh, to acknowledge the speakers for Camp Killworth. Uh, I think they brought up really, uh, interesting points, uh, just like people from the North Lake, uh, community. Um, and I really hope that we are being, uh, sensitive to trees that, uh, are being cut for money and trees that are being, uh, cut for, um, the fact that they're dangerous and/or, um, sick. And so I really want us to, to really, uh, um, urge the system, uh, to be cognizant and aware of that. Um, and so, uh, also wanted us, uh, to say thank you to the many volunteers, uh, that have put the canned food, um, uh, drive, um, together, uh, and I know that, uh, Jerry Lynn worked really, really hard on that, uh, and so I appreciate all the efforts. It was fun meeting a lot of the people that are giving up their time, um, and even saw some of our commissioners out there, so that was great. Um, and I also wanted to acknowledge, uh, Marie Davis, who worked under Tim Johnson and our economic director and in the mayor's office. And she was here for a short bit of time, but as I understand, she, uh, she was extremely uh, successful in getting a lot done. So, uh, I know that her last day was last week, on Thursday, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. Uh, and I also wanted to acknowledge Mr. Tom Mesmer, uh, and I am grateful that he's still here, uh, and I hope he's hearing everything. I hope he's, uh, I, I hope for a positive win-win, uh, uh, solution to work with the council and work with our citizens. Um, so, uh, thank you for still being here and look forward to continuing to see you here at all council meetings. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember TooKloak, would you mind, could you please make a, a motion to extend time as we're approaching the ten o'clock hour?
Well, my report will be real quick. He said it all, as usual. Um, I move to extend the time to past ten o'clock.
Second.
But there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
I'm not kidding, he said everything I was going to say. I do, however, want to thank all of you again for coming. Um, I, this is a very, very serious issue, and, um, I think that you have a lot of support in the community and a lot of support from the council members up here. But we do have to follow the laws and the rules, and, and we, we can't break them and put our entire city at risk. It doesn't mean we like what we do sometimes because we have to follow the law, but we really, really do, I don't want to say feel your pain, but we love that area, I love that area, I love to drive over there. It's so peaceful when I drive through there, and, and I know it's not going to be that way if, if things change the way they're proposed right now. Um, so do know that we really, really do feel it, and we've talked about it many times in exec session, and we can't talk about what we've said in there. But this council is with the community, we really are. And, uh, I think that's all I'll say on that. And I think, uh, everybody else said I was going to say, so I will just say the, uh, that's it for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Deanie. Uh, Deputy Mayor Burbridge.
Thank you. Uh, as well, I would like to thank each of you who came this evening, um, for each of your issues. And, um, as was said earlier, I did live, uh, in the North Lake neighborhood, um, with my husband and children, I had now adult children, and we all continue to have a, a very special affection for North Lake and, and that whole area. It's, it's very, it's a very special, uh, place to, to spend your time, and, um, it'll, it'll always have a special place in our hearts. This has been a challenge, this is a challenging, um, issue for, for the whole city. And as has been said so well by other council members, um, we do have a process that we're, we are required to follow. I do read your emails, and I, I want you to know that I will be as well searching for a solution, the best possible solution, and one that addresses as many concerns as possible, as creatively and effectively as possible. And I just would add, I attended a, also a, uh, meeting this morning of the South County Area Transportation Board, and we had a couple of presentations. One was a, um, proposal for a southeast King County, uh, transportation benefit district, which was quite interesting. Uh, we also had a presentation on the Orca Card that's used for, you know, mass transit in, in the King County, um, area, and, um, we, and beyond, actually. And we, um, also, we're all invited, and this invitation is extended to everyone in the area, to the, um, the opening of the Angle Lake, uh, Light Rail Station, and that happens this Saturday. And we were told that there is parking at the parking garage, so, uh, if any of you are interested in attending that, there's a dedication at nine thirty AM, it's the Angle Lake Station Plaza at South Two Hundredth Street and Twenty-Eighth Avenue South in Sea Tech. And you can also go to the, uh, events at soundtransit.org website for more information.
All right, uh, with that, we will be in recess for executive session, uh, for collective bargaining pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one four zero four B, property acquisition pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one one zero one B, and evaluate qualifications of an applicant for public employment pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one one zero one G. We will be in recess for that purpose.